We're going to call me into order and everybody stand for the Stand to sweep the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Dennis Clemmons?
Here.
Ms. Patyski?
Here.
Mrs. Blongren?
Here.
Mrs. Jakin?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
I heard you. Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
And Mr. Wurz?
Here.
Just in case folks didn't hear, Mr. Cormac is away at a conference and so is participating by phone.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to take Policy 217 off the table, embed the chart attached in Slide Number Five that I have sent for tonight's preview, and add Policy 217 to the agenda for board vote tonight without any additional reads on our policy committee report. There's been quite a bit of discussion.
Madam President, there needs to be a second before we have a discussion.
A second? Okay, so it's moved by Mr. Rice and seconded by Mrs. Dennis Clemmons. And this is just to take the policy off, put it onto the agenda, and I would ask that we withhold the comments until that time.
So if the vote is on, just sorry, lawyer stuff, on which section? Where are we putting it?
Section 11.
Yeah, no, Policy Committee, yeah. Section 11. Okay.
So you have the motion.
Yeah, so there's a motion and a second. The President has indicated that all discussion about the content of that will be allowed during that motion. So right now, it's just a vote to approve, to amend the agenda, and vote on it at that section of the agenda.
And to pass it?
Right, as you stated.
Correct.
Right, no, to pass it now after our comments and open up the public comment.
No.
It's all one motion.
No, what I heard was to take it off the table, to put it in the Section 11, right? And then to vote on it with disposing of any second reads.
And?
Right, and to pass the motion.
Pass the motion.
We have to have public comment. We have to have public comment under the Sunshine Act before there's any action. So my recommendation is that the members vote on the motion to amend, and then when we get to Section 11, everyone make whatever comment that they want at that point. And we can take public comment on the issue.
Yeah, there was a majority that actually asked for the 217 policy to be added to the agenda, but it's not. Therefore, we are asking for it now to be moved to the agenda.
You can add it to the agenda into the policy section, but you should not vote on it at the beginning of the meeting. It should be in the policy portion.
Where the other policies are voted on.
Yeah, where the other policies are voted on.
So I understand that that's what the motion is going to be, and we're going to take public comment, which we're required to do under the Sunshine Act. So if we approve this motion by a majority, it would go in the policy reports. It can go at the beginning of the policy to get it done with. So right now, there's a motion and a second. There needs to be a majority to vote to amend the agenda, to put it into Section 11.
Okay, so we have. The motion is to add Policy 217 to Section 11, the policy committee report of the agenda. All those in favor, Slide Number Five are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I think we need to have a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Chala.
Bob, you're on speaker.
Mrs. Dennis Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Patyski?
May.
Mrs. Blongren?
Aye.
Mrs. Jakin?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
No.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Wurz?
No.
So the motion carries five-four. Now we're going to move on to public comment. According to Policy 903, "Public comment, which is limited to three minutes, should be directed to the presiding officer rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. For confidentiality and privacy rights, specific comments regarding particular individuals must be communicated privately to the school board and superintendent via email at psdschoolboard@penrich.org." Okay, so the first person on the list for public comment, I believe it says Joseph Pearson. And when you come down, please state your name and municipality.
I'd like to switch my public comments to Robin Reed. I agree?
Oh, okay, I see. I saw your arrows. So then it's Robin Reed first, please.
Robin Reed, Percasi Borough. In front of you tonight is a petition signed by 193 Penridge students, all in favor of keeping a four-year history requirement. I'd like to draw your attention to the last column of this petition, labeled "Future Career Path." A driving factor behind this graduation requirement policy is student freedom and the idea that students going into non-history-based careers aren't in favor of this four-year requirement. However, 76% of these signees are going into non-history-based careers, most into STEM careers like surgeons or doctors or pediatricians, but also quite a few into vocational careers. Although I don't like your proposed plan, I understand what the board is trying to accomplish. In some research, I found the other schools that feed into the tech school, Quaker Town and Palisades, have different graduation requirements for their tech school students. Quaker Town's national ranking is 3,051. Palisades is 2,573. And Penridge's, where all graduation requirements are the same, is 5,221. The solution to this problem is simple: different graduation requirements. In fact, both Palisades and Quaker Town require four credits for all four core classes for their all-day high school students. Rather than arguing to take away in one department, maybe the board should look at districts above them and consider adding requirements in math and science, not removing the requirement from the history department. I leave you with a question. Haven't we given you enough? I've spent the last week as a machine. I've brought this petition to school, a farmer's market, my last homecoming dance, my last parade, and my last football game. It has been all I have thought about. It has followed me to college visits and Zoom meetings. Anytime that I could bring this up, I do, because it means so much to me. If it's not me, if it's not my petition, maybe you could look to the teacher's presentation, the price this will cost, the burden that you're adding to their back. If it's not the teachers, look to your community, the deluge of emails I know that you've had. I never thought that I would see the Penridge community united like this. Shouldn't all of this be enough? The answer is yes. If this policy truly came from a board member thinking that they were doing the right thing, the response from the community, the teachers, and especially these students would be enough, and it would mean something. But it's not that reason, clearly. You have what you need to make the right decision. Don't make the wrong one for the wrong reasons. Thank you.
And who else? Come down next person. We do have the petition signed by the students, and I too took note, Ms. Reed, of the different career paths of the students who signed it. So now, Joseph, did you want to come down? Okay, state your name and municipality, please.
Hey, I'm Joseph Pearson. I'm from Schaafont, Pennsylvania. I'm a big part of the orchestra department in the school here. I'd like to go on record saying I'm not specifically talking about the social studies department, but I would like to bring up just the idea of giving students a choice and pushing for more electives. I think that there's multiple solutions to every type of problem. And when we're faced with a problem like Dr. Bolton has stated at the last meeting that I was at, of trying to push for the best education opportunity possible, I don't know if personally I would go about that by giving students more choice. I think that you can point a racehorse in the right direction, but you can't make it win the race. I think there's a big push for more electives, more choice, choosing whether you can do history or not, choosing whether you can do tech school or not. I think it's up to the students, like in particular, and up to the teachers, to motivate the students in order to take advantage of the great opportunities I already have at Penridge. Thank you.
Okay, next is Dakota Bornen Murtha.
Dakota Bornen Murtha, Hilltown Township. I was unable to speak at the last curriculum meeting, so I thought I would bring what I had prepared for the last meeting to speak to you here. Over the course of my four years in high school, I've discovered that I am a lover of history. Because of this, I plan to pursue a bachelor in arts degree that will allow me to split my time between studio arts and art history, with a focus on museum studies. Despite this, I didn't always love history, but I did know I loved English. So in my freshman year, I took humanities, social studies, and I fell in love with that class and how it allowed for a melding of English and history. I had a dynamic curriculum that allowed students to build their writing, analyzing, and public speaking skills. I understand that the proposed changes to this social studies program would involve drastic changes or an end to the humanities program. I cannot stress enough how important this class was for my high school journey and how, as I went on to other English and history courses, I was able to make connections between the two and see how the classes complement each other. As I progressed into 10th grade, I entered Mr. Cousino's AP US History course, and I started to realize how much I truly loved history. The class was able to delve into and explore facets of US history that I had never before heard of in a mature and nuanced way that I didn't think I could achieve and that I do not think could be achieved in a class of ninth graders. The idea that the past, not just of the US, but the whole world directly informs our world in the future was fascinating to me and something I was able to further explore in Mrs. Newman's AP World History course. This class opened windows to new areas of history that had never been touched on in many years of US history. To have light bulbs go off in my head as to why Brazil speaks Portuguese instead of Spanish, the line of demarcation, and the origin of the idea of the Third World, Cold War-era alliances. While I understand the importance of learning US history, I think that AP World History is just as important. Almost every student at Penridge has grown up in the United States, learning its history from the world around them. The same cannot be said for naturally learning the history of the rest of the world. And world history classes may be the only space for many students to ever gain a true understanding of other world cultures and peoples. Thank you.
Okay, next is Nikki Reed.
Nikki Reed, Percasi. I will be saying the same public comment I spoke at last meeting for those of you who were not here there to hear it. I'm speaking to you as a concerned Penridge senior. Throughout high school, I have taken humanities, AP US History, honors world history, and I'm currently taking AP Psychology. In the past three years of school, I have gained valuable skills from all of the history classes I've taken. Not only have I learned important lessons in memorization, interpreting historical events, but I have developed relevant skills in writing at an advanced level, analyzing texts with older English, organizing thoughts, making connections, conclusions, and much more. As a student pursuing a career in medicine, decreasing the amount of time students study these skills concerns me. Have you heard of a doctor who didn't know how to make diagnostic conclusions with a set of symptoms? Or a biologist who didn't know how to properly write a lab report? Secondly, understanding historical events from diverse perspectives allows students to appreciate cultures and peoples from all walks of life. Without a solid understanding of how different cultures work, how could a student prepare themselves to work with different backgrounds in a professional setting? Throughout history, students learn a lot more than how to spit out facts. The proposed plans to change social studies classes requirements are not properly setting up any student, regardless of career path, for success. Additionally, history and social studies concerns a large amount of different subtopics. It contains American history, world history, and cultures, psychology, and government. If students are not required to take a fourth year of one of these subjects, most of them will not, and instead, take early release, later arrival, or an alternate class that they think is more directed to their career path. However, social studies skills span a large number of these topics that students can apply to any career choice and are essential to a functioning society. Finally, choice is a major concern for changing the graduation requirements. As a senior, I can tell you that fulfilling the credits that I needed to graduate while still taking classes I enjoyed was not an issue for me. I was able to take the minimum two years of a foreign language, continue taking orchestra and choir for four full years, and add AP Science and Math classes into my classes that I wanted to take. When I graduate, I will have surpassed the minimum graduation requirements. Additionally, I still have the choice of lunch release with my schedule. I know your hope is to make this true for all students. While we may not convince you to stop this policy, I urge the board to find other implementations. Social studies is an essential skill in students' repertoire and can allow students to have a more successful college and career experience. Thank you.
Dave and Kemp?
David Kemp. Hello, my name is David Kemp. I'm a senior at Penridge High School, and I'm here on behalf of the remaining marching band members who could not be here today due to scheduling issues, but they are in agreement with what I have to say. It's my final year. My education will not be hindered by these preparations for the future curriculum. And I should probably be at band practice right now, but I'm not. I care too dearly for this. It's not my intention to offend or provoke or criticize any of these actions. I just want to address my personal concerns and the concerns of my people. I can't bear the thought of a student missing out on the experiences I've had in high school. A thank you comes from an honest friend who thought Islam was polytheistic and couldn't point to India on a map. Before world history, that's just what they thought. At first, it shocked me, but that someone could know so little. But upon further consideration, where else are they supposed to learn these things? Little YouTube documentaries, their families? Look it up. In our world, you just expect people to know these things, and why shouldn't you? When we're raised in the United States of America, we surprisingly learn very little about the remaining 95% of the world. Can I tell you something? I've never had a unit on the Roman Empire. The Roman Empire, the architects of Western civilization we were going to in sixth grade, and we just didn't have the time. We had two weeks of school left. We got a presentation or two on world history, but that was all just for historical context. We couldn't manage to make room for the most iconic political state in human history, and now we want to make less room. The United States is not the only country in the world, but if people are taught that, it gives them a frighteningly dangerous sense of self-nationalism, and they won't know when they've gone too far. We need to be able to compare our country with the rest of them. We need to know why the United States is so great so it doesn't fall apart in its own arrogance. Students without a world history class will not know nearly enough about globalization, Western imperialism, decolonization, innate causes in authoritarian society. These are all necessary aspects of worldly knowledge to understand the current state of our global world, and yet they are confined within these classes that just narrowly manage to discuss them sufficiently. And students are not going to choose this class. They're not going to choose it if it's not required, that is. Students will often lack that initial curiosity to select a course because they don't realize how uneducated they are in the subject. And should that lack of curiosity become the defining characteristic of the argument to remove its requirement, then I ask, what exactly is the point of a required class in the first place, if not to enlighten the im proficient and stimulate their dormant fascinations? To my understanding, all educational administrations aim to ensure that youths are prepared for their lives ahead. And I'd like to address that. Coming from someone who's experienced having to learn 100 years of American history in just three weeks, the last three weeks before the test, we did not have enough time to also cover world topics in their proper depth. We can't address history like this. It's all we have left. The past is what the future is built on. And I'm not trying to sound... Sorry. All right. Mostly, we're just worried. We're just frustrated and just concerned about this issue. And please, we have a good thing going. Please don't ruin it. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Matt Carbonaro, Percasi Borough, former Penridge grad of 2014. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. School Board is about to vote on a policy for social studies that hasn't had the proper exploration, research, development, and discussion on this important topic. Before you consider your vote, I urge you to watch last Monday's curriculum meeting, which was awesome. Please consider several aspects about the proposal. This proposal isn't to lower the requirement. It seeks to eliminate world history as a required course. This would ultimately cause disruption and have a harmful impact on the students here. Even though students are only required to have three courses of social studies, they still require world history. In Pennsylvania, the standards are for students to learn world history no matter what. If we eliminate that, important material will be eliminated, and we would be essentially cramming instead of learning. Furthermore, this proposal eliminates a very valuable ninth-grade humanities course. Eliminating that puts a hindrance on preparation for future learning from students. Moreover, this would force students to take AP classes in ninth and 10th grade years in freshmen and sophomores. The results show these students at this grade level are not ready for challenging material, not all, but some, that this course might teach. Test scores will show a decline and might affect the school's academic ratings. Most importantly, again, this proposal seeks to caliphie something that hasn't gone through the proper vetting, research, and development. My solution, as a former student with a political science degree in history minor, for the five school board members who are in favor of lowering the grad requirement, please show the community compelling evidence that this is warranted. We need a compelling presentation from you, as the teachers did in previous meetings. There is plenty of opposition on this issue, students, faculty, and the community members. I ask that you take more time on this matter. Please talk out the differences you might have. The long-term effect of this vote will only be bad. Please don't make this a hyper-partisan issue. It doesn't need to be. Thank you all.
Good evening, Chris McDonald, high school senior. I would like to preface that I am passionate about the STEM fields. I have taken every advanced math class possible and intend to major in chemistry. I am the ideal example of a student that would elect to take AP STEM courses over history. However, world history changed the course of my education because now I'm applying to liberal arts colleges to continue to broaden my outlook on the world. Going back to eighth grade and participating in mock congressional debates, I discovered my talent in public speaking, leading me to participate in the semifinals team last year and debate president now. The reason for my success is because of the history track set up from middle school all the way until senior year. Reconstructing the history curriculum would cut these historical applications to fit content in and leave the next debater unnoticed. However, I made the mistake not to take AP US History because of the very reason proposed already, thinking STEM-bound students like me do not need history. Yet requiring the world history credit was my push into electing to take AP World History because I felt I had developed the necessary skills to be a historian at the college level. It takes time to develop these skills. By reconstructing the history curriculum, leave students like myself feeling like they are stuck in one track. The impact of having world history has been widespread. If I had not taken this course, I wouldn't have left Spanish class a few weeks ago excited that I could talk about La Reconquista, Ferdinand and Isabella, and the formation of the Spanish monarchy in Spain, or famously, the ones that sent Columbus to the East Indies and what became the Americas. And because of the world history class, I am heavily looking into colleges with study abroad programs to see what I've learned about in class in person, to improve my fluency in the Spanish language and bond with other people. Without world history, I would have not learned in depth about my own religion not having learned about the foundations of the Lutheran Church until only last year. If you elect to reconstruct the history curriculum, know that I would go to some college intending to stick me in a lab all day with a linear outlook on society. World history convinced me why it is so important to be bilingual in this diverse world and expand my educational comfort zone to better my own country by looking to the rest of the world and appreciating our own culture unanimously. I am not just one of the 10% of AP students here. I am a Penridge student that needs to understand the world is broad, and we need to know it. Thank you.
And then Mariana Ridding, you're next.
Hello and good evening. My name is Nora Ridding, and I'm currently a senior at Penridge. I support maintaining the current credit requirement of social studies credits. As a part of the upcoming generation of Americans, I feel that the requirement of world history is something that I have greatly benefited from, especially since maybe it wouldn't have been a class I would have originally chosen. The requirement of four years of social study credits is something that students will continue to benefit from the teacher. It is important that we teach students not only to be great American citizens, but also citizens of the world. Taking world history has helped me to understand the history behind many current conflicts and America's involvement and place in this world. I believe that there is so much value in requiring students to take a credit of world history, and that should continue. Thank you.
So, Brianna or Ryan?
Brianna.
Hello, my name is Brianna Ridding, and I'm a junior here at Penridge. I am also currently taking world history. Throughout my high school career, history has done so much to shape my thoughts, ideas, and understanding of our country and the rest of the world. Changing the social studies requirement would not have the positive impact on our school that you may think. Instead of choosing other classes, students would opt for early release, lunch release, and late arrival instead of learning the tools they would need for life after high school. Before world history, I had so much basic knowledge missing of the world around us, including medieval Europe, ancient empires, and most importantly, the Magna Carta that helped shape our Bill of Rights. I urge you all to vote against changing the social studies credit requirement and think about what you want our future students to learn and the tools they would learn from the current history classes. Thank you.
Is Jamie West here?
Yeah, sorry.
I couldn't see.
Jamie West, a math teacher at the high school. Good evening, my name is Jamie West. I grew up in Percasi. I grew up in Percasie. I was a Penrich alumni, class of 1996, East Rock Hill resident from 2004 to 2022, Dibler parent from 2018 to 2022, and a math teacher at the high school since 2001. I have sat on district-wide committees to help make Penrich a great district. I have always spoken positively of Penrich and the opportunities that students have in this district, but I am fearful where the district is headed with decisions of the past years that the school board is making. I have seen science courses changed and lab periods removed, swim classes removed from the elementary and secondary levels, curriculums needing to change book choices, cutting of health and P E requirements, and now talk of decreasing history requirements. As a math major in college, I was required to take courses outside my focus, art, science, writing, and history. They may have not always been my first choice as a young adult to take, but they helped prepare me for my future, opened my eyes to topics I didn't know, and created new passions that I enjoyed. I want a district that is preparing all of our students for the diverse world they live in, a district with high standards and not decreasing curriculums and requirements, a district not afraid to celebrate diversity in every student, a district that strives to make sure every student feels that they belong. I want a district that is not going backwards in time with its policies. I want this for my child and every child that attends Penrich. Unfortunately, my child is not going to have his name on a Penrich diploma like myself. It saddens me to say that as an alumnus, but I see surrounding districts doing a better job currently. I moved out of this district two months ago, partly because of decisions this school board has been making. Not every family has the means and the opportunity to do that for their child. I want you to remember the purpose of your job as a school board member. Help provide a great, well-rounded education for every child living in the Penrich School District. Thank you.
No, actually, you're on the agenda, but you need to go in the second comment period because you're not speaking to agenda.
I am speaking to agenda.
This is executive session, that's not on the agenda.
We can't speak to executive session.
That's not on the agenda.
On the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, but we can't.
Only to announce what happened when it's not something that we can speak to. You can speak about it in the second period, a little bit before we go into executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Adam, oh no, sorry, Adam is not. So Angela Shuttle. Thank you for putting the pronunciation.
Good evening. My name is Angela Shuttle and I am a social studies teacher here at Penrich High School as well as a former student, class of 2005. I'm here tonight to ask the members of the board to refrain from voting on the proposed change to the graduation requirements that will reduce the required social studies credits from four to three. Over the last few weeks, my colleagues, supervisors, administrators, and our students and community have presented brilliantly on the benefits of social studies education and how this reduction would negatively impact the vast majority of Penrich students. It has been mentioned countless times that the reason for this reduction is to increase student choice when it comes to course selection, implying that there's not enough choice for students when selecting their courses from year to year, and that reducing social studies credits would somehow create more opportunity and solve that problem. As the graduation requirements currently stand, students can choose, on average, three credits worth of just various electives each year that they're in high school, and these electives come from all departments in the school. While some selections currently have to fulfill a humanities or creative and performing arts requirement, there are still plenty of opportunities for students to take whatever course they want and for the most part, whenever they want. To put it in perspective, I'd like to share some numbers to reflect the amount of choice students have when selecting their various electives. There are currently 106 courses that would count towards the humanities requirement. There are 57 courses that would count towards the creative and performing arts requirement. And if this were to have passed over the summer as originally proposed, there would have been 138 courses or VOTEC shops that would have counted towards the STEM requirements. The opposing argument might suggest that while there are all these classes to take, students do not have enough flexibility in their schedule to take what they want to take. That is also not necessarily the case. Many juniors have at least two and a half credits available outside of their core courses, which could equate to up to five different courses to take, while many seniors currently have up to five free periods in their day to take anywhere from five to 10 different classes. Overall, students here need 24 credits to graduate, but with the number of class periods each day at the high school, students can actually graduate with up to 28 credits. By those numbers alone, students can choose to take up to four additional courses beyond the minimum to graduate. As I mentioned, the graduation requirements as they stand allow for plenty of choice for the approximately 2,400 Penrich High School students. If there is concern about credit fulfillment for a particular group of students, we ask that you take the time to address those unique concerns and not uproot the entire system that would negatively impact the majority of our students. Thank you.
And then Bob Cousino, you're on deck if you want to.
Tammy Rissmiller, I'm a math teacher.
You too. Hit the button.
Oh, that would help. There we go. Tammy Rissmiller, math teacher here at the high school. So, good evening. My name is Tammy Rissmiller. I've been a math teacher here at Penrich High School for over 26 years. I've seen so many positive changes over my tenure here, a growing community, new facilities, the addition of the latest technology. Unfortunately, I've also seen some negative changes, changes that are detrimental to our students, changes that contribute to our falling standards. A few years ago, we stopped requiring seniors to maintain a certain number of credits for the year, and now we only require them to take the number of classes required to graduate. With this change, I have had college-bound students opting out of a fourth year of math, specifically an AP math class, so they can leave early on senior release. If we drop the social studies requirement to only three credits, their department will see the same. There are so many great opportunities for cross-curricular education during senior year. In teaching statistics, I always enjoy when my students see the application of statistical concepts in their psychology class. As our requirements decrease, so do our standards and consequently, our school ranking. These rankings affect our students directly. If one of our students applies to a college and they have the same grades and scores as someone from another school with a higher ranking, the college will take the other student. Colleges look at rankings as an indication of the standards set by our school. Please help us in maintaining a high level of rigor and relevance for our students because what hasn't changed in my many years here are my incredible students, these incredibly kids right here. I have always been proud to say that I teach at Penrich High School and I just want what's best for them and their future. Thank you.
After Mr. Cousino, Katie Hart or Caitlin Hart?
Bob Cousino, Cellaro Burrow, Penrich Social Studies teacher. First, I would like to thank the board members who value our expertise as teachers and value the input of our community members by showing up to the board meeting last Monday and listening to us. As a teacher, I have an ethical responsibility to my students, and this ethical responsibility is to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of my students, not just a particular group of students. This board also has an ethical responsibility to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our students, not just a specific group of students. This issue was originally raised by a particular board member that wanted to create more choice for a specific group of students, this being our VOTEC students. I agree, if there is a group of students who are lacking choice, then we should explore what we can do about that. What we shouldn't do is sacrifice the academic needs of a specific group of students to create choice for another group of students. Let me be more specific. We have shown with an ample amount of evidence that this decision will harm many of our students at Penrich. AP enrollment and scores will decrease, court depth will diminish, the development of critical reading and writing and thinking skills will decrease, and state standards won't be adequately met. I teach AP US History here at Penrich. AP US History is the second most popular AP course in the nation. This AP course, in addition to other AP courses, will be significantly impacted. Moving AP US History ninth grade, in my opinion, is unethical. Making 14-year-olds take college coursework will have profound mental and emotional toll on these students. Again, it is the board's ethical responsibility to what is right for all of our students. You will not make decisions, make a decision that harms a specific group of students to benefit another group of students. We are capable as a district in investigating all potential avenues for our students and to create a pathway that fits their future endeavors. We are currently exploring block scheduling. This will create more openings in student schedules. It has been mentioned that we should make a business course mandatory. This is something we could consider when exploring block. But creating a business course mandate doesn't mean you have to decrease social studies by 25%. 8.9% of Americans own a business. 100% of our students become American citizens, and they need to be well-informed citizens because they will have the ability to vote in our democracy. Our administration has spoken against this move. Our students have spoken out against this move. Community members have spoken out against this move, and we teachers have spoken out against this move. If you vote to decrease social studies, you are telling us, teachers, that our voices don't matter. They were just puppets and our expertise doesn't matter. To be honest, this is not a type of district that I'm interested in working for. I'm interested in working for a district that has board members that value our voice and expertise. A few on this board have shown that our expertise does matter. Now I ask that the rest of you follow their lead. Thank you.
My name is Katie Hart, Cellaro Burrow. I'm a senior at the high school. I took world history last year and it changed everything for me. I absolutely loved it, but I understand that history is not for everyone, and I understand why the board would want to look into this decision to open up to more choice. But coming from a student's perspective, that's involved in a lot of different activities. I have a lot of different friends that go to the tech school, do different sports, they have different interests. I don't think I ever heard of a student complaining that they had to take world history. I just mainly heard everybody talking about how much they enjoyed their class. And I understand that, like, that's just a personal story of mine, that I'm sure other people have heard complaints, but I just don't see that this is a student's issue. I don't hear anybody complaining. I just saw all my peers turning into more well-rounded people and saw them start to understand the world around them better and start to understand references that they'd heard their whole lives. They just start to understood things more than they ever had before, and I just don't see that changing the requirement is an issue for any of the students personally. And that's all I have to say.
And then Sandy Hipoff. Your turn, Dick.
Am I on chest? All right. Hi, my name is Charlie Lanhart. I am an English teacher here at Penrich High School. I've been teaching here for 27 years. I currently teach AP English Language and Composition, or AP Lang, World Lit Honors, and World Lit Academic. I'm here in the hopes that we will be preserving world history as a requirement for Penrich. I teach English. AP Lang is a rhetoric class. We learn about argumentation and we read primarily nonfiction. In that way, it's a bit of a blend between an English class and a social studies class. AP Lang is a mixture of juniors and seniors, and the seniors, who have been through world history, clearly have a much greater awareness of the workings of the world outside of the United States. For the younger students, the gaps in their knowledge can be breathtaking. Consider a few examples. Just a week or two ago in AP Lang, so juniors, but only a month into the year, the topic of fascism came up in relation to Orwell's 1984. I mentioned Benito Mussolini in class and got a lot of blank stares. I had a sneaking suspicion, so I decided to poll all three of my classes. I said, raise your hand if you know who Mussolini was. Only a few did in each class. In fact, 65%, nearly two-thirds of my students, again mostly new juniors, were unable to tell me anything about Benito Mussolini, not a country, not a war, not which German dictator he was friendly with. Also, just a few weeks ago in my World Literature Academic class, I made an old pun. I said, denial, it's not just the river. And again, that sneaking suspicion. I asked, what's the Nile? One student answered pretty quickly, it's a river. I said, yes, where is it? He said, in Africa. I said, great job. And I turned to write the next thing on the board and he said, is that the one George Washington crossed? He realized it was a mistake, but finally, this one goes back a few years, but it's memorable. In my World Lit Honors class in 2015, again, early in the year, I had the students write a short research essay on a world topic. One student showed the NSA spying scandal, where the US NSA was found to be tapping world leaders' phones. The student turned in a final draft, peer-edited with sources, about a woman in Germany named Angela who was upset about the US spying on her. It was in the news that this woman, Angela, was very upset that the US had tapped her phone and she really wanted something to do about it. That woman was, of course, Angela Merkel, who had been chancellor of Germany for 10 years at that point. He had no idea. To be clear, this is not on the students. They learn what we put in front of them. We have to teach them about the world now more than ever. The world is interconnected and that is never going away. We need world history, not as an option, but as a requirement. If anything, I see that two years of world history is a requirement in four of the other districts in Bucks County. I'd argue for Penrich to become the fifth. Thank you.
After Sandy Hipoff, we have David Brown.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Hipoff and I teach seventh grade social studies at South Middle School. I have been teaching world geography for 19 years to seventh graders. I understand where the 12- and 13-year-olds are developmentally, and I know what concepts their brains are ready to process. I also know how to adapt the challenging textbook we use and bring in supplemental resources so our students can learn the vocabulary and content. I feel confident that the students who leave my class at the end of the year do so with the necessary understanding of their place in the world, along with the skills that set them up for success in future classes. I'm sure the same can be said of many of my colleagues in Penrich because they are experts in their subject area. I point this out because reducing our graduation requirements will drastically shift our department's curriculum from the middle level to the high school. This consequence was outlined for you in the department's presentation to the curriculum committee last Monday. To ensure that our district satisfies the Pennsylvania state standards for social studies, it is proposed to merge the current sixth-grade curriculum of the ancient world with seventh grade's world geography. Developing this merged curriculum will be a Herculean task. Both the sixth grade and seventh grade teachers, we struggle each year to cover everything in the curriculum. A combined course is too much content for 180 school days, so major concepts in both curricula will have to be cut in order to fit two years' worth of curriculum into just one. This means a major curriculum rewrite would be necessary. This would be unfortunate for several reasons. First, the district just approved our curriculum last fall, and now the taxpayers would have to bear the burden of the cost for another rewrite and new resources for a curriculum that had just gone through this lengthy approval process. Second, world geography and the ancient world, yes, they're under the same social studies umbrella, but they are two very different curriculums. To compress these two curricula for the purpose of providing a choice to seniors would negatively impact the lower grades since the amount of information and skills covered would have to be reduced. These courses need to remain separate to do justice to the content and to our students. I am pleading with this board to pay attention to the arguments presented by us teachers and the community members and these amazing students. Your policy change will have a ripple effect that reaches farther than just a simple reduction in credits. Please remember that you represent this community of teachers, administrators, students, parents, and voting members of this community who have overwhelmingly requested that you please maintain this current graduation requirement that we already have in place. Thank you for your time.
Time director, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. My name is David Brown. I am a humanities English teacher here at Penrich High School. I am a champion of education, the Penrich School District, and our students. I've taught the children, four children actually, of current board members and have even traveled on school ski trips with some of them, and I have nothing but positive things to say about these individual students and the job that their parents have done in raising them. Penrich is a great place to work, partly because of these kids, their parents, and this community, but it's also because of the dedication and experience of outstanding teachers. I stand tonight in support of my colleagues from the social studies department, dedicated and outstanding teachers, and I believe that cutting the number of required social studies credits by 25% would be ill-advised for all the reasons my colleagues have already said. So please listen to my colleagues. Please watch the October 17th board meeting, the curriculum meeting, if you haven't already. Please listen to the students and the members of the community who are speaking here tonight, and thank you to those who have, and thank you to those who understand that our teachers are dedicated to maintaining academic standards and fostering well-rounded, critical-thinking individuals. individuals. These skills are developed in social studies classes, and there are no viable reasons to change things as they stand. We want Penridge to be a place where teachers want to work, where teachers feel heard, and where teachers are treated like professionals and experts. If you care about students, care about teachers. Listen to teachers. If you don't, we're going to continue to lose great teachers. That's a trend that I'm really dismayed to see happening here. We've lost a lot of good teachers recently. Our social studies department has well over two centuries, if not three centuries, of combined years of experience. Listen to them, and also I'm sorry if anybody from the Social Studies Department is offended by me putting it that way. Look, we have the opportunity to model stability for our kids and to create an environment where it feels like we're working together. That's what's best for our kids, not fighting. We're only as good as our leaders, and we need school board, a school board, that supports and listens to us, and administrators, and parents that speak up when the board doesn't. Once we've realized that we're on the same team, we, and more importantly, the students of Penridge High School, will be better for it. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Bolton, members of the Penridge School Board. My name is Paul Klimmer. I live in West Rock Hill Township. The school board is in a dilemma, whether or not to advance curriculum allowing four credits of social studies or three credits surrounded by world history. Perhaps my experience as a former chairman of the Pennsylvania House Education Committee might be helpful in seeking a resolution. When a House bill was submitted to the Education Committee for consideration, I recall a meeting of the members for a discussion of the legislation. In this give-and-take atmosphere, the majority of concerns that were in the bills were resolved. They resolved them, we resolved them in this, in this give-and-take discussion. While public hearings were the exception to the rule, but if required to gather more information, I would schedule a public hearing, bringing in testifiers, both pro and con. The purpose was to have a full discourse on the proposed legislation and to seek out any unintended consequences that would create more problems than solutions. After thoroughly vetting this type of legislation, the bill would then be again, would again be considered by the members of the House Education Committee. If the majority supported the proposal, the bill would be sent to the speaker for consideration on the voting schedule. Allowing debate and open discussion on these legislative proposals dispenses lingering questions and any unintended consequences. Perhaps a similar guideline could be used in proceeding with the social studies question. Thank you.
Dylan Barry-Exit, head of Mr. Township, a senior at the high school. Not very concerned. Those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Now I've taken, at this point, three AP history courses at the high school. I've loved every single one of them. What I love most about them is our ability to discuss history, not just learn and regurgitate facts, but have in-depth class discussions and develop a deeper understanding. As I mentioned last week at the board meeting, we are the next generation of leaders. We cannot just know who conquered who, when, what was established. We need to know why. We need to know how. But when is not as important. But that's what truncating the history schedule will do. The history curriculum is too important and too in-depth to not necessitate four years of history, but will not allow for the in-depth discussion and the in-depth understanding of our next generation. Thank you.
And Allison Kearney, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Raymar Hunter. I'm a Percasie Borough resident with three children in the district. I also teach math here at the high school. Tonight I am here to speak as a parent in support of finding creative ways to solve scheduling conflicts without compromising the quality of our existing academic programs. My three children all attend Guth Elementary, in 4th grade, 2nd grade, and kindergarten. My oldest loves music and animals. My middle child loves STEM class best. The kindergartner is just getting started, but he loves everything about school so far. I do not know what pathways will interest my children by the time they reach high school. Will my daughter choose to pursue veterinary science at the tech school? Maybe they will participate in band and orchestra, take art, photography, wood tech, metalworking, or ceramics. They might take world languages or business classes. My STEM-loving middle child might take advantage of the rich variety of science, math, and computer science electives at the high school, or follow his mechanical interests to tech school in automotive or small engine tech. Whatever paths they choose to follow when they reach high school, my children will benefit from a district that puts a strong academic curriculum at the core of everything we do. Many of my colleagues from the Social Studies Department have shared about why they believe four credits is essential to their subject. They have spoken at previous meetings to explain the meticulous way the social studies curriculum has been built to progress from 8th through 12th grades, and to share the in-depth projects that they use to enrich this subject for students. This group of teachers includes representatives from each grade level 9th through 12th, and from academic up through honors and AP courses. No matter the pathway my children choose, these will be their teachers, and I respect their opinion. I ask the board to consider creative solutions for our tech students that will allow them to follow the pathway of their choice without compromising the foundational academics that are valuable for all of our students. I hope that by the time my children enter the high school, there will still be a strong academic core of courses, and that they will have four years of social studies classes. Thank you.
And we're going to do our question, Allison Kearney.
Good evening. I'm Allison Kearney, Hilltown resident and parent of two children in Penridge School District. I'm also a chemistry teacher at the high school. One of our primary responsibilities as a school district is to provide students with a high-quality education that prepares them for their role as citizens in our democracy. This requires us to help develop their understanding of not only our community, but also the United States and the larger world. During the Curriculum Committee last week, I greatly appreciated that the committee members listened to the professionals who know the social studies program and care about preparing students for their futures. The committee members asked clarifying questions and engaged in a positive discussion. The presentation made a strong case that reducing the number of required social studies credits would have a negative impact on students' educational experiences and their development as informed citizens. Possible changes to graduation or curriculum requirements should not be considered without thoughtful, informed deliberation and long-term planning. I want what's best for my children and for my students, many of whom are here and did a wonderful job speaking tonight, and for all those Penridge students who are out there and up and coming. I just want the best for them. We can best meet the needs of our students and the world that they will live in by having a strong, comprehensive social studies program, by keeping the four-credit social studies requirement. Thank you for your time.
Stephanie Regina, Regina, you're on deck.
Tom Urther, Hilltown Township. I just came to give a small parent perspective following this. You know, thank you to the board members who took the time to attend the meeting last week. The Social Studies Department gave a very impassioned and thorough defense of what they're doing. And as a parent of a senior here at Penridge who has gone through what they're doing, it's been amazing to see her progression, and she could be ready to go to college tomorrow because of the efforts on their part. And I just think it's going to be a big mistake, and I mean, we're lucky, our kids have already benefited from this, but as we've heard tonight, people are moving, teachers might, I mean, how do you expect to attract talent in the future if this is the kind of like, you know, support that the faculty can expect from the, from the board? So I just really wanted to, you know, lend some credence to what the teachers did last week, and I hope that board members that weren't there did take the time to watch that, because I know it is on YouTube to watch all the time. And just in closing, I wanted to say that today I got a newsletter from the high school, and I thought it was funny that in light of all this stuff that's going on with this curriculum, that you guys managed to put in there bragging about the AP, you know, performance of the students here, and yet of what we're doing here tonight and talking about is throwing a big part of that in jeopardy. So just some food for thought. Thank you.
Stephanie Regina, East Rock Hill Township. Following this many speakers, I am floored by the brilliance of our students and the profound commitment of our teachers and the somewhat unprecedented unity of the community. So I have three kids at Diver. And in the beginning, I was thrilled to be in Penridge. I was thrilled for them. But as one of our teachers has pointed out, a teacher that I, I mean, I'm also listening to teachers finding out how many both live and work here, which I feel like is kind of a unique aspect of purpose of Penridge. Also, how many people are alumni and stay here and raise their kids here. I mean, these are things that we wanted when we chose to raise our family here. But then, as it's been pointed out, like, just as my kids came of age for the swim classes like that, that was changed, that was taken. You know, reducing the science lab requirement, or however, that got restructured so that there's less lab time, and, and now this. And, and everything I'm hearing tonight, I, I still have profound trust in our teachers. And that is what comforts me, that we are actually one of those families for whom resources did not allow us to move. We tried to leave Penridge last year. The resources didn't work out. So we're staying, and I trust these teachers, but they sound a little flaggy, frankly, and that's a little disturbing. I, I expect that my, my children will do their best, their best, to learn everything they can, but they're not always going to know what they don't know, which I think is one of these students, what one of these students said. And it's not like, in the beginning, when I first heard about this, I thought, okay, they pick three out of four. And now that I'm better understanding that this is, this is completely like overhauling a carefully crafted curriculum spanned so many years. I, I have no, no matter, no matter what my children's work ethic is, nothing will change what they won't learn if this change goes through. So as that parent, I urge you not to approve this change.
The remaining people on the public comment list are comments for the second public comment period, so we will go into the president's report. And as you've already heard, the hot topic in town is graduation requirements. We recently have heard from a large number of stakeholders, which includes current and former students, parents, teachers, administrators, and other community members. And from all of these discussions and the recent, you know, the feedback that we've gotten, there are two main takeaways, as, as I've seen them, I've thought about it and tried to compile everything into one concise explanation. So the first takeaway that we, that I found was that stakeholders have suggested a number of different approaches, which they would like to have considered, and forgive me if I missed one, and I did miss one, which was provided to me during a public comment, one that I had forgotten about. But according to my notes, these approaches are, include but are not limited to six different ideas that I've heard mentioned from stakeholders. The first one is to keep graduation requirements as it, as is. So in other words, we keep social studies and our health and PE credits, which is something that's kind of getting missed in this discussion too, that there is some, you know, some suggestions that we would make changes to those. So the first option is to keep everything we have as is. The second thing, our second option would be to lower the social studies and the health and PE credit requirements to three and one and a half respectively. I think I had that right. The third option is lowering the social studies requirement to only three credits and also eliminate the world history requirement to make it available only as an elective. This option would also insert a half-credit of civics inside those three remaining social studies credits and compress the 9th until 10th health grade classes from two years into one year. The fourth option is to lower the social studies credit requirement to three, but keep world history as one of those required courses. And that was suggested because that's what's done in other school districts you may have heard, don't require four social studies credits. But when I looked at those schools that don't require four social studies credits, each one of them does require one of their three courses to be a world history course. So that's one of the other suggestions that was made. The fifth suggestion is to allow the block scheduling committee that has already begun to meet to see if block scheduling could alleviate scheduling conflicts and increase student choices. Many schools use block to balance student choice with having the appropriate breadth and depth needed for a quality academic experience. And the sixth option, that I didn't remember until Ms. Reed mentioned it, was that perhaps we could have different diploma options for our students. Some schools have scholars diplomas with different requirements, additional, kind of, you have to take additional courses to get that. And other schools like Quakertown, as it was pointed out, actually has different requirements for the tech students, which is something that long ago was asked by a, a board member at a committee meeting, "Hey, why can't we have different requirements for tech students?" And the answer was that we weren't really permitted to have different diploma programs. But now that we know that that's possible, the suggestion has been made to consider that option. So the other takeaway that I got from all of this was that while the reasons people support the various approaches are many and detailed, and we should not get into all those particulars of them in this forum, to Mr. Klimmer's point, this really isn't the place to have a discussion. That's supposed to occur in committee. One thing on which there seems to be solid agreement is that there hasn't been a full examination and comparison of all the options, and that is true. While there has been a lot of talking by separate groups and separate meetings, there hasn't been a formal constructive exchange of ideas with everyone present. There are still a lot of questions and a strong desire to take more time to ensure we devise a course of study that will serve all Penridge students well. Since we've heard very compelling arguments from stakeholders to have all of these options given full consideration, I decided to honor their many requests and remove Policy 217 from tonight's agenda. Voting on 217 tonight would codify something which was not, is not fully developed and was the only option that was really given any consideration up to this point. If our goal is to increase choice, we should incorporate that theme of choice from the very beginning and give stakeholders choices in how our students will be educated. It won't make sense to implement, implement the policy only to get our scheduling and our curriculum, get to our scheduling and our curriculum committee meetings where the supporting details of the policy would need to be developed, and discover then that this one option we've been given is not what will work best for us. We'd only have to turn around and rework the policy all over again. It's better to discuss all the options, coalesce around something, work up the details, and then vote on it. It remains my hope that we will have the opportunity to do that. And now we're going to move into the superintendent's report, please.
Wait, hold on just a second. I wanted to make one comment about the public comment. This was my most enjoyable evening on the board since I started listening to public comment. There was so much positive stuff, so many people. I was so impressed with our students. I was so impressed with our students. It makes me, gives me great joy that our, our future is looking pretty bright with people like this coming out of our high school and the teachers. Thank you again for pouring your hearts out and letting us really know what is important and what's so great about our teachers and really standing up for what you believe is great. And everyone could not imagine passing this way, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colton. Tonight's superintendent's report begins with the proud announcement that tonight we are celebrating five students who have earned recognition by the National Merit Scholarship Program. We had one senior, Ava Alafan, who was named as a semifinalist, and four seniors, Caroline Bailey, Dylan Burexa, Peter Darrow, and Kayden Kwan, who are named as commended students. National merit recognition is based on students' performance on the PSAT exams taken during the fall of their junior year. Ava performed in the top 1.5% of the 1.5 million juniors who took the test in 2021. That puts her in the top 22,000 among 1.5 million juniors across the nation. As commended students, Caroline, as commended students, Caroline, Dylan, Peter, and Kayden were in the top 3% of all test takers, which put them in the top 45,000 out of that same 1.5 million nationwide. This is the most number of students that we have recognized for this award in Penridge since 2012. I'd like to introduce these students to you, get you a chance to meet them a little bit and a chance to congratulate them. Students, when I say your name, if you begin coming forward, we'll read a couple of nice things about them and then we'll do the rousing round of applause once they're up and you've heard about them. So we'll start with Ava Alafan. Ava has earned the AP Capstone Diploma and is an AP distinguished scholar, who will have completed 10 AP courses by graduation, including physics, seminar, research, chemistry, biology, calculus AB, calculus BC, literature, English Lang, and computer science. She hopes to attend Princeton or the University of Pennsylvania's dental affiliate program, which would allow her to complete both undergrad and dental school in only seven years. Ava and her parents tell us that she hopes to become either an oral surgeon or an orthodontist. She's been a competitive dancer since the age of two, and she's a member of several clubs such as National Honor Society, Student Council, Key Club, and others. She has also founded a charity, so please check it out, Fat Cat Cookies, where she donates 100% of all cookie sales to local animal shelters or Penridge fish. Let's congratulate her. Ava, stay there, stay there, stay there. We, we got pictures to take. Don't worry, soon somebody's coming up, I promise, all right? Let me introduce you to Caroline Bailey. Caroline, come up and save Ava, please. Caroline is passionate about nature and plans to major in environmental science. She is applying to universities all over the country, and she's very interested in foreign language and cultures and is currently taking her fifth year of French. She's been a dedicated member and leader of the Friends of Rachel Club since the 10th grade. She's also an active member of Key Club International, National Honor Society, Unified Penridge, and the Penridge Women's Track Team. Finally, Caroline loves photography and is currently working on an art independent study highlighting the beauty of Bucks County, which will be featured in the PH, the High School Art Show in May of 2023. So come back and check that out. Congratulations, Caroline. Dylan's parents wrote to us and stated, we are so very proud of all of Dylan's academic achievements and extracurricular activities. He has successfully balanced the rigorous academic schedule and involvement in the debate team, academic challenge where he served as president, and the math team where he served as vice president, as well as Rock U, all while tutoring and holding down a part-time job. He looks forward to attending college next year and majoring in biochemistry with an eye towards working in pharmaceutical research. Let's congratulate Dylan. Next is Peter Darrow. Peter is a member of the Penridge Men's Soccer Team, the National Honor Society, and the Key Club. In addition to school, Peter plays club soccer, is a soccer referee, and works as a groundskeeper for Bishop Estates Winery, and volunteers his time helping at a few local businesses doing odd jobs. Let's congratulate Peter. And finally, Kayden Kwan. Kayden is not able to join us tonight. Oh, Kayden is able to join us tonight. Yay. Kayden plans on pursuing computer science and healthcare. He's heavily involved in serving and volunteering at his church, since as his family says, it's where he's happiest. Let's congratulate Kayden. Next, Penridge has gone pink in the month of October. This month, we've had an impressive amount of support for breast cancer awareness, many buildings and teams and individual fundraisers for this important pause. There were so many examples of this spirit that we just couldn't fit all the pictures into one slide, but every school building and just about every sports team showed their pink Penridge spirit in some way this month. You'll even hear about one of those efforts during this student report later today. Next is update on My Ascension. This week, right here in the LGI, there will be an important event for our teams, their families, and our community. The event on Thursday night is the screening of a documentary called My Ascension, which will be followed by a question and answer session featuring local mental health and medical providers. The evening, because of the content, is not recommended for students under the age of 13 or for students to attend alone. The film was chosen by the Bucks County Suicide Task Force, and this event is part of our collaborative effort that began last year with our partnership with St. Luke's Pen Foundation and Grandview Hospital. Topics for our educational evenings this year are in response to the 2019 and 2021 PACE survey results. The event is free, open to everyone in the public, and walk-ins are welcome. The doors open at 6:00. The documentary will play from 6:30 to 8:00 with the question and answer from 8:00 to 8:30. There is childcare available for students in kindergarten through age 12, and there is more information in the community section of the Penridge website. Next, we'd like to congratulate some teachers. Every year, the Penridge Community Education Foundation, or PCEF, presents learning grants to staff across the district to help support innovative programming that helps our students and their families. Tonight, I'd like us to welcome Ms. Patty Knott, who's an officer for PES, for PCEF, the vice president, who is here to announce this year's winners and provide us an overview of the wonderful work done each year by PCEF. So welcome, Patty.
Thank you. On behalf of the Penridge Community Education Foundation, I'm pleased to announce that we are giving over $6,000 in grants this year. The education foundation was founded, I believe, in 2010. Since then, we've given over $50,000 in mini grants. We've also given $10,000 to the stadium. And every year, we give a scholarship that sometimes it's 500. Last year, it was three $1,000 scholarships. The main purpose of our fundraiser, which will be in April, we think, we have to do a little juggling with dates this year, but it's called a Lovely Evening. And at the Lovely Evening, we honor what's called the Friends of Education, which are people, teachers, administrators, parents, support personnel, who have gone beyond contributing to the district. But the main, that's our main fundraiser, and most of our money does go to the mini grants. So the teachers apply for the grants in the fall, and they, they are asking for something that goes beyond the budget, something that will improve their classroom, something innovative. I'm always, this year is the first year I read all of the applications, and I'm always surprised at the variety of, of ideas. So we have, I believe it's eight recipients this year. We have Sarah Gray from Elementary Music, and her grant was for inclusion for sensitive ears.
And the teachers who are able to join us tonight, if you're here, if you come forward when your grant is mentioned. Thank you.
We have Sandy Hipoff and Shelby Schaefer from South and North Middle Schools, and the grant is for online Sotera patron membership. From Guth, we have Rebecca Loita and Lee Anne Gato, who got a grant for enhancing language development for bilingual students. And Kimberly Stalina from Central Middle School for Keyboard Unit. Rachel Pousford from the high school for flexible seating for drama. Ally Regal from Grass for Bulldogs Building Connections. Colin Leach from Bedminster for a calming room. And Jill Troutman from High School Art with the Empty Bowl Project. Congratulations to all of you.
Let's congratulate all of you. Ms. Knott, you come over, we have a big check to give.
Yep. All right, you guys can help me out.
Not for me.
Grab it in. Hold the ball now. There we go. All right, that's the video. Here we go. Good change. Go on together. Let that check. Very good guys. One, two, and three. One more, one, two. Go a little bit, don't hide behind it. There you go. Right there. One, two, three.
One more congratulations.
I'd like to add one more thing. The foundation is always looking for new members, new volunteers. You can like us on Facebook at Community, Penridge Community Education Foundation. Our website is pcef.org and on Twitter at PCEF News. Please give us a look. Thank you.
Patty, thank you so much. And please take, take back to everybody in PCEF, I've obviously only been involved for five years of the 12 that PCEF has been in play, but all of the representatives of that group love Penridge. Many of them have been teachers, almost all of them have been parents whose kids have come through the system, obviously live in the community, and every dollar they raise comes directly back to Penridge in some form. You've heard, you've heard many of them, that every dollar they raise, there's no administrative overhead, there's none of that. It comes all the way back. So continue to be looking for that A Lovely Evening and any other events that they're doing, and we'll make sure we get that date out as soon as we have it. So Patty, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
And that is the superintendent's report. I would like to introduce everyone to Viviana, who will be one of our student representatives this year, and she's going to have the student liaison report.
Hello, my name is Viviana. I am one of two sumeys on, the other one is actually in the crowd today, who was presenting for her claim for the thing. We mostly, I want to first talk about Ava Holpon. She recently joined Student Council last year and has made an amazing effort in participating in the event and making the school amazing. I just want to give her more credit because she very much deserves it. All right, now to the important things. Pink Out. Pink Out was a very successful event. We had multiple sports teams, clubs, all participating in not only their own discount events, but also the large one on, oof, I'm sorry, October 20th, something, I'm a little unsure about the date, but we raised over $10,000 to donate to Grandview Hospital, which is a very good amount. Student Council put a lot of effort during the actual football game to decorate, make thousands of Pink Out ribbons that sadly did end up on the stadium floors, but it's all about the effort to Pink Out. We also had a very successful homecoming parade and homecoming itself. If my count is correct, we sold over 1,000 tickets for homecoming events, and it was a very great experience for all things, and I think it was a very good way to introduce the freshmen into what school dances are going to be like. And then the parade, we had over double the amount of clubs from last year to participate and walk Seventh and Blooming Glen. Notable mentions are the marching band with the cheerleaders and Rocky with the ending. So it was a very fun and good event. I believe that's it on my part.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Did you, somebody mention you on the Powder Puff?
Sadly, I do not keep up with Powder Puff, but I do know.
Who's the sophomore?
The sophomores. No, and I'm pretty sure freshman last year also won, which is the same group. So good on them. They're really making us look bad.
They're a dynasty, almost. They're a dynasty. All right. So we'll move on to the consent calendar, and I would like to...
Could I please have the person, item H superintendent's personnel voted on separately?
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar items A through G.
Second.
By myself and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions from board members? If not, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormack is still on the phone.
Mr. Cormack, you there?
I'm here.
It's actually the curriculum, sorry, hang on. John.
Okay. So our curriculum committee report, we do have a couple of motions to pass. First one is curriculum improvement proposals, and I would like to make that motion to approve the following curriculum courses, A through C listed below, civil service and military fitness, emergency care, first aid, CPR, AEB, and unified physical education.
Second.
Okay, so by myself and seconded by Mr. Wirth. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Yes, I have a question for the administration. We had an employee who was not able to be paid monthly and was instead being paid over the summer, two months after finishing working, which was not something that this employee could manage financially. We for, in our union contracts, allow the employees to have the choice of whether or not they're getting paid as they work as opposed to getting paid that's spread out over the summer. I don't think that that's fair. So I'm hoping, that, that item is on the agenda, so I would like to see that fixed. I don't see why we can't pay that individual in the other manner so that that individual's getting paid as that person works.
We offered the employee that other manner, and they turned it down and chose this one instead.
Okay. Are there any other comments? All right, so again, this is for consent calendar item H. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormack is still on the phone.
Mr. Cormack, you there?
I'm here.
It's actually the curriculum, sorry, hang on. John.
Okay. So our curriculum committee report, we do have a couple of motions to pass. First one is curriculum improvement proposals, and I would like to make that motion to approve the following curriculum courses, A through C listed below, civil service and military fitness, emergency care, first aid, CPR, AEB, and unified physical education.
Second.
Okay, so by myself and seconded by Mr. Wirth. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, two question, well, one's a comment and then I'll ask a question. I'm supporting this because we, I'm, I'm supporting the unified phys ed course because it's better than apparently what we're doing currently, but I want on the record that I think it's unfortunate that we are, it's one thing to have that in your after-school sports because you're giving these kids an opportunity to participate in those competitive sports, and I'm fully supportive of that. For a phys ed course during the school day, the fact that kids have to opt into or opt out of the inclusive class, it's... I'm supporting this because we, I'm supporting the Unified Phys Ed course because it's better than apparently what we're doing currently. But I want on the record that I think it's unfortunate that we are, it's one thing to have that in your after-school sports because you're giving these kids an opportunity to participate in those competitive sports and I'm fully supportive of that. For a Phys Ed course during the school day, the fact that kids have to opt into or opt out of the inclusive class, it's disappointing to me. We should be doing this in all of our Phys Ed classes. All of our kids should be included in our Phys Ed classes with the supports they need, with everyone else. We shouldn't need to design a class just for these kids in isolation and then, oh yeah, other kids can sign up for it too. That's not inclusion. Phys Ed is one of the few opportunities that our kids with special needs have the ability to be fully included with their peers. That should be happening in all of our Phys Ed classes. That's my comment. As far as my question. When Swim was eliminated, I saw that Swim is still in the Unified PE course, but since that was eliminated in the, or proposed to be eliminated in the drop of two credits to one and a half credits for Health and Phys Ed, I just want to ask if there is a plan for kids to be able to test out. My concern is, I know a lot of people who are older and so I don't know a lot that are younger, but I know a lot of older people who never learned how to swim and they can't go out on a boat. They can't go and do all of those things because they have a fear, obviously, of falling in and they don't know how to swim. I would want to make sure, I think that the reason it was built in was to make sure that all of our kids have learned that skill. And I think a majority do, but I would like to see us at least make sure that all of our kids have the ability to swim, at the very least, if we're taking out that. And the reason I bring that up is because the Unified PE course seems to be the only course that, well, other than just taking swimming. I just want to make sure that we take care of that situation.
Two things. First of all, all of our students are included to the level that they are able. And so we do have students who are in various number of social, of Phys Ed classes. This Unified is obviously specific to the program and so it is another opportunity for it, but all of our students are included to the level that they're able to do that. I believe the comments were referring to the second grade swim lessons. The history behind second grade swim lessons, for those of you who've been in the district for a while, in second grade, students used to be able to come up here and opt for swim lessons. The Y took over that program. They stopped that program a few years ago with COVID and we're still in conversation with them to offer that to our second grade students. They have not brought that program back yet, which is why we moved it to the Y and offered families to be able to do it there as opposed to here in the second grade. We do have swimming options for students and students can choose to take swimming courses. It's not like they don't have to, that they can't. They're just not required as part of the 10th grade aquatics class.
Yeah, I guess I was just hoping that we would have a way for them to like a test out, show that they can swim because they may not choose it if they're afraid that they should all learn how to swim.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? The motion again is to approve the three curriculum improvement proposals. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries nine zero. Okay, and then our next item is a motion to accept the eight mini grants that were just presented to us, totaling again $6,231.36 from the Penbridge Community Educational Foundation.
Second.
Okay, it's seconded by Mr. Rice. And my only comment would be again, thank you. This is not already left, but we do appreciate it and every bit of the money does go right back into our classrooms. So it's a labor of love for them over at PCEF and we are grateful for it. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries nine zero. The next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 1st. Do you want to, now we're in Policy 217. Oh, yes, I apologize. So as part of the notes, since the Policy 217 has been placed back on the agenda and there is the potential that it could be passed this evening, we do want to give the teachers the opportunity to just make some comments to summarize what, you know, the presentation was for those who are not able to see it. So I understand we have some teachers and Dr. Scheid. If you could come on down.
Board members, this presentation is under administrative content. Obviously, you can also turn around if that's easier for you.
Hi, I'm Michael Chuzo, a social studies teacher here at Penridge. First, I would like to just thank everybody that has spoken on behalf of the Social Studies Department, the students, the community members and the teachers. So there are a couple of things that we would like to address. Just in case you didn't see some of our presentations or were confused about a couple of things. I'd like to start off talking about curriculum writing. So really, proper curriculum revision takes the upwards of three years if you want to do it effectively, if you want to do it with fidelity. And the reason it takes so long is because it really requires collaboration with all subjects, all grade levels. And what goes into that is really a tiering of skills and the development of skills over time that they pass from course to course, from year to year. The other consideration that we need to be aware of is just to make sure that everything is age appropriate, the tasks that we're asking our students to complete and the content that we're asking our students to learn. Just for example, when did this take place over the last three years? It took place in a variety of different settings. It took place in service time with the experts that we brought to the district, Dr. Heidi Gates Jacobs and Dr. Ben Calik. It took place during our PLT time, which is our professional learning time. It took place during the service days as well as the department time. And it was really a culmination of what we've been working towards over the last three years. And that culmination resulted in four different grades, seventh through 12th grade, social studies curriculum getting approved last year, again, after three years of working on it. And I do want to just highlight, there are a lot of different options that we've been talking about. But any change that we make will impact the way that we teach US history. So one of the questions that we really have to consider is, we're going to have to decide which topics of US history we want to delete from our curriculum. And overall, the Social Studies Department goal is really to create a cohesive curriculum across all grade levels and across all subjects in order to support all disciplines and really support all of our students. All right, so what you're looking at right now is a chart that, right now in green, highlights the scope and sequence of our current curriculum. So as you can see, we start in sixth grade with Ancient History. Then we go into Geography. And then you can see three years of US history and you can see the years that each of those courses covers during that year. Then 11th grade, we have World History and Culture. And then our current 12th graders are taking that Government half year and then most of our seniors are taking that Government half year and an elective for half year. If you look over to the other column and you kind of follow diagonally, that is what, one of the options that has been discussed in order to be able to reduce the credit requirement from four to three. So in sixth grade, we are considering one of the options would be to combine Geography and Ancient History and then shift those three history courses that we just talked about to seventh, eighth and ninth grade. And again, I do want to highlight the fact that the last time our Penridge students would be getting US history would be as ninth graders at 14 years old. And then they would take, under this model, the World History and Culture class, followed by that Government course and half year elective. And then there would be no requirements their senior year. And if I can point out, this is the first time that this new model would actually be put into place in fidelity where they would be starting with that new course and ending their, graduating with no requirement their senior year. And if you look, that really wouldn't take place until 2030 school year.
So my name is Heidi Newman and I teach World History and European History at high school. And I'm here to briefly address some of the curricular aspects of this possible change. So it was suggested that one way to reduce social studies credits would be to remove World History as a requirement. If that were done, we would still need to address the basic standards from the Pennsylvania Department of Education and those world standards would then need to be addressed in US history. So essentially, what you would be doing is using US history to teach World History. So to give you an example, in covering the World War II unit in US history, you would be covering the US home front, you would be going into the European front and then you would have to pause at the European front and you would need to go to India. And in India, you would be looking at what Islam is, what Hinduism is, British imperialism, to address Gandhi. Then you would come back to World War II and the European front, but you have to pause again to go to China to look at the Chinese Civil War and talk about Shanghai Check and Mao Zedong. And then once you cover that, you would be going back to Europe. After you finish World War II, you need to go back to China. You'd need to look at the rise of Mao in 1949. It can get very confusing. And in that, you would have to remove some US history to fit the World History in there. Now imagine doing that at a younger grade level, sixth and seventh grade, where students are developing their basic analytical skills and reading and writing. Some students even struggle having an organized notebook that you're working with. And now you're combining the content. You're looking at new resources, looking at the age appropriateness of the materials, the maturity of the students and what you can actually cover. And we would need to address all of that as you shift all of those subjects down in grade levels.
And just to give a concrete example of what Mrs. Newman is talking about, just in 10th grade, which is one of the courses that I teach, the honors textbook is currently a college-level textbook. So if we shift US History III down to ninth grade, that is just one example of many of a resource that would definitely not be suitable in terms of the content as well as the reading level for ninth grade students.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to address costs and to address some other things that I see happening here with the suggestion or the recommendation to the four to three credits in social studies. As both these wonderful teachers and every teacher who spoke tonight and I'm humbled by the students who spoke tonight, the value of social studies instruction at Penridge High School has always just been a part of what we did. We talked about why we were decreasing credits in Health and PE. We talked about values we always valued. Above all, citizenship. We're a public school system. We talk about standards all the time. But I thought it would be imperative for everyone to hear what we read and how we develop our curriculum through the state of Pennsylvania. So the state of Pennsylvania tells us for academic standards for civics and government, the Pennsylvania Constitution of 1790 was the basis for Free Public School Act of 1834, that is the underpinning of today's system of schools operating throughout our Commonwealth. These schools were created to educate children to be useful citizens loyal to the principles upon which our republic was founded and aware of their duties as citizens to maintain those ideals. This is how we build our curriculum. That's civics and government. In history, in history standards, history is a discipline that interprets and analyzes the past. It's a narrative, it's a story. In order to tell the story, it's not sufficient to simply recall facts. It's also necessary to understand the context of the time and place and to apply historical thinking skills. I will tell you that that is what led us to look at all of our curriculum. And we've been writing it for the past three, four years. And we've spent a lot of time and money in the district to ensure that our teachers, every one of them at the secondary level, and we're working with our elementary staff now, have the capacity to write rigorous curriculum for the students in front of us, for the Penridge students. And they've done that work. They've worked on it and the courses have been approved. Everyone agreed that this was the course, the content, the strategies, the resources that our students needed, especially in social studies. Because it's our job in public schools to develop citizens of the United States of America, the greatest country in the world. And there is nothing more important than that. So the idea that all the work and everything that we value is now being challenged that, no, we're going to decrease the number of credits and by doing that, taking away important concepts and the time that students need to develop their understanding of what it means to be an American citizen and a world citizen. The idea that we can sprinkle World History throughout other courses is unfathomable as we move forward. So this impact, the financial impact that this slide is talking about really is about the work that we have put in to helping our teachers write the curriculum of rigorous, in-depth, not cursory curriculum. And the one example that we have given is the, it took five teachers in 10th grade to write one, to do one course, right? It was, it cost the district $6,400 because we value what we're doing. That work is now in Atlas for all students and students to come forward, the students who are here and the students are coming because we're thinking about our future. If now, we have to go back, and now we have to go back six courses and we have to redo the courses, I mean, there's the math. There's certainly approximations. When it, in terms of the reading of the curriculum, the six hours, that's $38,400. When we estimate new resources, it's about $100 per student if we have to go look at new books. These are estimations, but it's a lot of money for courses that we have already written. When you look at that total of $395,000, I think about the past, prior to this position, I was the K-12 Curriculum Director. And each year, we had about that, maybe a little less, just to use for all curriculum. I implore you to rethink the vote this evening on the most important concepts that we are here and public educators to do. I am a person who's always been a reading teacher. Literacy matters, but what does it matter if you're not teaching all the students who come in public schools about what it means to be a citizen of the United States of America and the world? Thank you.
There's one more slide. Student Choice Slide is, please.
So one of the things that we keep hearing is the idea of choice. So we thought it might be prudent to highlight all the choices that students have, specifically in their social studies education here at Penridge. So if we start with ninth grade, the first course that I'm going to talk about is that Humanities course. And that's really that course that blends that English and social studies aspect. And that course currently, this year, has 185 students in it that chose that course. This is a course that, if we were to make this change, will either be completely eliminated or radically changed. In, from 10th through 12th grade, we have five Advanced Placement courses for students to choose from. And currently, just this year alone, 191 students chose to take at least one AP course. In 12th grade, seniors get 10-plus elective choices to choose from in the Social Studies Department. One of those choices could possibly be the 21st Century Citizenship Course, which is, for the seniors, a combination of that English and social studies piece. This year alone, we have 55 total students that have chosen that course. 22 of our 74 VOTech students are currently enrolled in that course. If we were to make that, this change, that course will also go away. And then, one of the other things that I keep hearing is history, right? History in the Social Studies Department. And yes, history is a component to the Social Studies Department, but history is not the only component to the Social Studies Department. It really is a social science department. And as you can see, there are, these are some, these are the electives that our students can choose from and they're not just history courses. And it's not so simple as saying students don't need history after they leave Penridge or history hasn't made an impact on their life. Some of the courses in the social sciences that they get to choose from... Some of the courses in the social sciences that they get to choose from are economics, psychology, sociology, American law, American government, and international relations. And that's just to name a few.
Can I ask a quick question? You're saying that they have choice, but to be clear, right? Ninth grade, they have to choose some version of early American history. 10th grade, they have to choose some version of modern American history. 11th grade, they have to choose some version of world history. 12th grade, they get a half-credit of political sci, of the government class. So all of these choices that you put over here, they really only have one half-credit built into their social studies of four credits to actually choose any of those other things that you mentioned, right? I mean, that's, that's what the rules are.
Well, to be fair, there are students, especially in junior year, that are choosing from those, that list of electives there. So like, I have, I take sociology, which primarily is a senior course, but I have juniors that take that, that choose to take that. They choose to use some of their elective credits to take my sociology. And that can be seen in all of these courses, actually.
The reason why, I think I mentioned, because we have state standards, those are required courses in every public school in the state of Pennsylvania. We don't have an option. And world history is not an option either. So that's why they're required course. We do have many electives that the students, I mean, we're so fortunate to be able to offer all those courses.
I just wanted to clarify something so it's clear in the record. If I understand correctly, the minimum requirement is three credits. So if the school board would adopt three credits, they're meeting the minimum standards of PDE, isn't that correct?
The minimum standards, yeah.
That's what I said.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just adding to that, as far as meeting the minimum standards, those minimum standards include world history standards, which is what would impact, if you look at just removing world history, that's what will impact your U.S. history. And a lot of these electives that we are mentioning up here, students are able to do amazing analytical work because of all the skills that have been built by those required classes along the way. So for example, economics is a much more useful course because in U.S. history, students have looked at economic trends. And in world history, they've also looked at economic trends. So then, by senior year, they're able to do much more analysis.
I do have one, I just, are you guys going to, are you wrapping up?
We're wrapping up.
Okay.
So the last thing that I just wanted to point out is that currently, there are 12.7% of our seniors that are enrolled in Vote Tech. 16.4% of our seniors are enrolled in an AP social studies course. Now, I, I bring that up to you not to pit these two groups against one another, but to highlight how well our current system addresses the needs for all of our students in order to make all of our students effective global citizens in this community.
And that's ultimately, as a department, what we're looking for, that we can address the needs of all students. We'd ask to keep the time that we have to teach the skills that we are teaching and follow the curriculum that we've developed. Or at the very least, that you take the time to form a committee to actually look at what would be going on within the social studies curriculum if a change would absolutely need to be made.
And we do, we thank you for giving us this opportunity to present.
Okay. We appreciate it, thank you. We've never heard that. That last part about the senior class, that 12.7%, you know, and the 16%, I think that's a good, a good little piece of information to, for everyone to think about. Okay, so our next committee is facilities. Mr. Cormack or favor is going to?
Mr. Cormack, you're up.
Yes, thank you. Good evening from Penn State University. And my first order of the day is a change order. We have motion to approve a change order for nice construction in the amount of $61,870.26.
I'll second it. It's not very loud here.
No, it's not. So that was a motion to approve the change order for nice construction in the amount of $61,887.26. It's moved by Mr. Cormack, it requires a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Wurz. Are there any comments or questions?
I thought it was seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormack.
All right, make a motion to approve Bedminster Parent Teacher Group to purchase and install a gaga pit at Bedminster Elementary School.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Cormack and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions?
It's all gaga.
Thank you for the gaga pit. It's creepy. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormack.
Motion to approve FMX operation software for work orders, preventive maintenance, and facility scheduling.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice, moved by Mr. Cormack. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
A motion to approve bus routes and stops for 2022 slash 23 season school year as developed by the Transportation Department.
Do we discuss that before, or I never saw that before?
The bus routes and stops, was that at the meeting?
I know it's on the agenda, but I don't approve it, to be honest.
We are required by the state to signify that the bus routes are finished and that we, as a school board, you as a school board, approve them for the school year. It's a annual requirement.
Okay, but did we discuss this in the committee meeting, or not?
It was, I'm looking at Mr. Dalberg. It was not.
Okay. I'm still, I'm okay to pass it. I have some idea what I'm talking about. I'll second it. I'm familiar with it.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Cormack and seconded by Mr. Rice. Any other comments or questions? All those, whoop, nope. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormack.
We have a motion to, for obsolete items, A through D listed on your agenda.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Cormack and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormack.
The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 7, 2022.
Okay, Mr. Rice, finance.
All right, we're on finance. Here we go. Approval of contracts. I'm looking for a motion to, making a motion to approve contracts A and B. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr., moved by Mr. Rice and seconded by Mr. Wurz. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to, to approve a resolution to authorize a waiver of additional charges for the late payment of real estate taxes in the certain circumstances that comply with Act 57 of 2022. Give me a first second. Thanks.
It's moved by Mr. Rice and seconded by Mr. Wurz. And this is something that is not, it's, it's a law that we're not able to adapt in any way, so I just want to put it out.
Madam President, what this law is, is an amendment to the Pennsylvania Code which permits people who own their house for the first year to be able to pay their taxes late if they didn't get their tax bill. It is only applicable to those individuals. The, the indication that you didn't get your tax bill, which sometimes happens when you change ownership, was never a valid excuse. In this case, the statute, as amended by the General Assembly, sets forth certain exceptions which allow somebody to have that defense so they are not, they are not in the tax default list. It's a very specific remedy brought about by the General Assembly.
And Mr. Miller, correct me if I'm wrong, but the school district would not make that determination, the tax.
The tax, this authorizes the tax collector to do so under certain very narrow circumstances with very specific proof.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
All right, looking for a motion to approve 20, the 2022, or 2023, 2024, Act I Accelerated Budget Opt-Out Resolution. Give me a first second, please.
Second.
By Mr. Rice and seconded by Mr. Wurz. Are there any comments or questions? This is just our standard, well, it has become our standard in the last few years to pass this resolution to not exceed the Act I index. We won't seek any exceptions to our, for our budget. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Rice.
The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 7, 2022.
All right, Mr. Russell, personnel?
Each year, we're required to post our organizational chart, and so that's attached. So I have a motion to approve the 2022 organizational chart.
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Motion to table needs no second, but it does need a majority to approve that. Needs to be put to a vote.
Okay, motion's been made to table this.
Do you want to explain why, or?
The motion to table gets no, under the parliamentary procedure, gets no debate. No, no, that's fine, I'm just explaining why we have to do it this way. So the motion to table is, is a motion that takes prominence, so the matter's on the floor for a vote.
Okay, all those in favor of putting this organizational chart on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Or it'll be no.
I think, for, for clarity, let's do a roll call vote, please.
So what are we voting on?
To table the organizational chart.
Just table.
Just to table.
Have more discussion.
Motion to table's in order.
Mrs. Janwitz, can I confirm first that there are no time limits on the requirement for us to post the organizational chart? Are you aware of any time limits that make it has to be done by October 31st or anything like that?
I'm not.
Okay, I'm not either. I just want, okay, I just wanted to check before we move forward. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Vance-Clements?
Yes.
Ms. Batiski?
No.
Mrs. Blomgren?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacob? Mr. Cormack?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
No.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Mr. Wurz?
No.
So that is tabled. Mr. Russell?
That's the, yeah.
I guess you don't have another person or we listed.
Correct.
All right, so our next committee report is policy. Mrs. Vance-Clements.
Madam President, I think in 11A is where the amendment was made to consider 217. What's that?
Sorry, one moment.
Mrs. Jacob is not present.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if she was not present. So actually, the motion fails to.
The motion fails at the court.
If it's tied, it's a failure. So we'll go back to.
So you, it's.
Mr. Russell, you can make the motion to approve it.
Well, the motion's already on the table, we need a second. To what? To approve the organizational chart.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Russell and seconded by Mrs. Batiski, Ms. Batiski. Are there any comments or questions? I guess now we could have some comments about the chart.
I want to discuss the chart in executive session, and I also have some questions about some pieces that don't seem to be in there.
It is a personnel matter, it would be appropriate to discuss in executive session.
Any other comments?
I'm not aware of the situation, but the administration will pull the matter and we'll bring it back up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So on to policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. To start off my committee report for policy, I'm going to first have Mr. Rice share some thoughts that he wanted to share, and then I will continue. And also, yeah, could you pull up that, the PowerPoint that was sent? Thank you.
Just as a reminder.
Sorry, board members, this is not part of administrative content. It will be on the screen, okay?
Just as a reminder, there are no actual classes that are being removed from any courses study as far as moving anything forward, which, however history class you may choose. We're looking to give greater flexibility to students so they have more options, which is directly aligned with their own personal pathway to success. We have talked about it for the last eight months, realistically, from February through, well, now this would be the third presentation, but actually, 11 committee annual meetings. Let's see.
Okay, and at the last board meeting, it was tabled and sent back to the polit, it was tabled so they could go back to curriculum so that teachers could give a presentation. It was supposed to be, I think, for health and phys ed teachers, but they weren't invited. But then, social studies teachers were invited, so they gave their presentation. And then, that moved to policy. It was on the agenda again in policy since our last meeting. The board moved it forward to the board meeting today. And then, a committee meeting for curriculum was called on Friday without any notice to any of us. I actually found out from my husband, who said, "Oh, you're having a special committee meeting?" I didn't know, it wasn't available. And so it was publicly posted before we even knew about it. And then, here we are at this meeting, but that's why you probably saw a little lackluster attendance.
Wait, I just wanted to, I would like to clarify that we had the.
This is my report.
We posted the meeting. I do want to mention that.
Please finish your comment.
Okay, so up on this, yeah, this is up on, so the district's proposal, this is what I wanted to first share with you. The district's current proposal that they have put forth actually violates, no, 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 start with this one. The, the district's proposal violates the school code. PDE requires two credits of arts and/or humanities or both. PDE goes on to define exactly what arts and humanities are in four specific categories: visual arts, dance, music, and theater. It further breaks down that teachers with those certifications are the only ones who can teach them. If you look, this was what the administration put together as far as the state requirements. It breaks them up here, you can clearly see two arts or humanities or both. And that was the definition from PDE of what that is. Please go to slide two. This was the administration's proposed graduation requirements where they decided that humanities from the state's category actually would be moved to social studies, and they are requiring a fourth social studies instead of humanities. They are also creating a new category called STEAM, ironically, to allow kids not to have to take art, as is required by the Department of Ed. Because as you can see, by putting science, math, and a choice of any of the above under STEAM, it actually allows you to take science or math instead of art, which, again, violates the school code. It also begs the question, at least from my perspective, were art and music teachers consulted on the idea that students could graduate without ever taking a single arts or humanities course or meeting the state standards in high school? Because there are state standards for arts and humanities. Can you please switch to the next slide? This is a schedule of the, this, this would be a tech student's schedule based on the administration's proposed, based on those graduation requirements proposed by the administration. As you can see, they literally do not have a single elective in their entire schedule. For students who do not have any room in their schedule to add any electives, like students who attend tech and others, they would be completely denied access to a free, appropriate public education in line with the state code, even if they wanted to, because they are being forced to take social studies instead and do not have space to take it elsewhere. So they literally cannot take the requirements of PDE. They can't. There's no room for it. They have to take social studies instead. The district has set this precedent of mandating against PDE requirements rather than block students from being able to take the fourth social studies in place of humanities, which is what we should do based on the law. We are suggesting at least leaving that option open to at least give students the ability to take the state requirements. The key question is, if the point is to prepare students for their future, what future would benefit most from the requirement of a fourth social studies class? That doesn't mean everyone wouldn't benefit from it. Everyone absolutely does. And I appreciate the passion of the students who shared that, and I hope that they're. and I hope that their guidance counselors help guide all of our students in the direction that's best for them. It's just not the, it's just not what will work for everyone. Would it benefit college-bound students or students entering the trades? The answer based on college admissions as well as criteria from business and industry is no. Not that it wouldn't benefit them, but that would it benefit them more than any other criteria? Please show the next chart. This shows you an average of what the college requirements are when you apply. These are, these are, this is typically what your admissions look like. If you look at this chart, so, and I went through grad admissions requirements everywhere, okay? All the way up to Ivy League schools everywhere. They require two to three credits of social studies. I couldn't find a single one that required more than three, with most of them requiring two. On the contrary, many require up to four credits of math, science, and foreign language courses, which many of our students would not have the ability to take. Social studies credit requirements for college are lower than any other core content area in college admissions, and in many cases even foreign language. But it's the only one we want to require above and beyond the state, limiting the ability for students to choose a course that will be required for their education in many cases. Although many universities compare students based on the GPA of their core content area courses, students must take additional math, science, and foreign language courses to have a competitive shot of getting in. Again, one category is clearly missing from that list, social studies. The College Board website doesn't specify a need for added social studies requirements, but specifically speaks to having four credits of foreign language and taking high-level courses. Despite not calculating courses like arts and humanities into the GPA for comparative purposes in many cases, they do require you to take at least one art class and have a well-rounded application, which again, students in many cases would not have the ability to do, as you saw with a tech schedule who can't take, you know, band or any of those other things through that you would need multiple years to be able to take either. They can't take band, choir. How are we measuring the success of social studies? Are we just measuring it through AP scores? That's a small percentage of students. Does it benefit everyone else who's not taking AP? Would those AP students benefit more from a different AP course? When students go to college after attending Pen Ridge, are they successful in college? What percentage of students graduating from college obtain a job in their area of study? For students to be competitive getting into certain universities, their core GPA is what's taken into account, causing a need to take all AP courses in those areas. Since we are mandating for social studies credits, they are forced to direct those AP courses to social studies when admissions criteria demonstrates they would benefit more from directing them to math or science. This is clear when looking up individual college admissions requirements as well as the comparative one that I showed you. Penn State requires four English, three math, three science, three social studies, two world language. But they require extra math and science for certain majors. Cornell, four English, four math, four science for many majors, three foreign languages, nothing, nothing about social studies, not even mentioned for Cornell. MIT, four English, four math, three calculus, science, three specific ones, social studies, two, foreign language, two. Princeton, four English, four math, two science, two social studies, foreign language, four. Some majors, again, require additional for science and math. They also take into account essays, interviews, and standardized test scores. There's notes, there aren't standardized tests for social studies, but there are from those other content areas, which would then be increased if they're taking more of those content areas. Business and industry criteria, that's the other category, right? So we talked about college, talked about business and industry criteria. Demonstrates academics are a small portion of what they are looking for with skills first hiring being the priority. What industry certifications are being earned from social studies? What career paths are we preparing students for with this extra history course? We have them for thirteen years. Certainly, we can cover needed content while giving students one year to follow their pathways. Many students attending the technical school who plan to go on to higher education go into medical, engineering, and business fields. We actually heard from several people at our tech meeting the other night, including one parent who was sharing how his son actually went to the tech school for welding, went on to get an engineering degree, had it paid for because of his company. So he got his college education paid for for free, and now he's making more money than his dad. You know, there's a lot of stories about that because they're getting that hands-on experience. Many of those pathways require additional math, science, and business courses they don't have the ability to take. I'm sick of hearing, that's their choice. We're denying them of their choice. Are we truly saying Pen Ridge should not be producing any veterinarians, engineers, or business owners because we don't want to accommodate those pathways? Those pathways incorporate a combination of learning skills at the technical school with extensive math, science, and business courses if we want to set those kids up for success. Do we really want to say to those kids, sorry, we can't accommodate your pathway because we know what's best for every single student? Are we suggesting kids in the technical school shouldn't have the same access to colleges? This is not to say, again, that everyone wouldn't benefit from an extra social studies. Everyone would, everyone would benefit from every one of the classes that we offer here. It's a matter of making them all specific requirements that prevent kids from being able to take what they need to be able to succeed in their future. I'm going to have, I know Jordan had some, she was also going to share some information for my policy report.
Okay. I do appreciate everybody coming out, and everyone's really passionate, which is amazing. And I do agree that it's brought unity in some aspects where we've been divided on other issues. I've taken a lot of, I feel like the words being painted tonight is that we are in disregard of the passion behind the teacher's recommendations, admin, students. And I don't believe that's fair personally. I feel like in the spirit of deliberation and debate, it would have been wonderful for, to have more notice about the special committee meeting as well as really having it be a debate and a deliberation and coming together and having those discussions. But it wasn't set up that way, and maybe that's how it was meant to be, and that's okay. So here we are tonight. I want to speak on the law for a moment. Regarding social studies, the Pennsylvania code states there should be three planned courses, each one hundred and twenty clock hours. History and government of the United States and Pennsylvania shall be taught as required in section sixteen zero five of the Public School Code of nineteen forty-nine. Notably missing is world history. It specifically states that US and PA history and government is all that the school require, that the state requires. I'm not dismissing that world history is something that you can gain a lot of knowledge from. I'm stating the fact that those are the, by law, that is what is required. It goes on to say that beginning with students graduating from a public high school at the end of two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one school year and continuing in each school year thereafter, a student who successfully completes a course in personal finance during grades nine through twelve shall be permitted to apply up to one credit earned for successful completion of the course to satisfy the student's social studies, family consumer science, mathematics, or business education credit requirement for graduation. Therefore, students could also, instead of applying that point five personal finance to only math, they could, they could take it in social studies as well. So in theory, they could also play with that and take that credit there in place of the world history that we require now. PDE standards. Okay, so I'm under the understanding that the reason the discussion goes way back to sixth grade to revamp and disrupt entire curriculum to go back to sixth grade is based off of the standards. I agree. In middle school, it would be incredibly insane to teach ancient history and try to merge that with geography. Currently, right now, students are learning Neolithic and Paleolithic ages, and I don't know how you merge that into geography with some pieces. So that's understandable. However, with the standards, they state clearly that they are in the code, in the state law, they are voluntary and instructive. They are recommendations, they are essentially guidelines, similar to guidelines they released during COVID that wound up being struck down by the courts. Okay. Standards in world history, there are seven of them. Mr. Rice, could you put, or, sorry, I need the one, keep going, sorry, if you could. One more, there we go. Okay, it's going to be hard to follow, I tried to simplify it as best as possible. Those are the world history standards, and a lot of the standards in all, and across curriculum are written in a way that you can teach things. As a teacher, it allows you to have creativity and things that are important as a department that you can come together and that you're able to say, well, we can do this awesome thing, whatever we want to do in our class, and it can fit under the standard. I do feel like they are very fluid that way. So some examples, I will just read one. Evaluate the interpretation of historical events and sources considering the use of fact versus opinion, multiple perspectives, and cause and effect relationships. That is one of the seven world history standards. Here, we are already covering this currently in the modern American history course and World War Unit One as well as the roaring twenties. Just, and again, this is just one example, not stating that this needs to be the only. But at the end of World War One and economic boom set forth known as the roaring twenties, where economic growth and individual prosperity impacted many countries, including Europe, America, South America, multiple places to cover some of the world history there. Again, that's just one example. Even if you accept the premise that world history must be taught, which it doesn't in law, and that the PDE standards for world history dictate how to teach it, meaning going back the whole way to sixth grade and disrupting the entire thing, which state don't, then we still are fully compliant with no impact because the seven world history state standards are already being covered in early modern American history classes. Now, there are a ton of economic standards. We don't have a required economic course. They are being met also in dispersed among different courses. There are fourteen civic standards that we do not have a required civics course for, and I recently emailed specifically wanting information on those fourteen civic standards where we specifically meet those standards, and they are dispersed around the curriculum, nothing specific. I brought this argument up in two previous meetings, and I've not been given one argument to say this standard right here is where we are deeply impacted, that we have to go specifically back to here, 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 all the way back to sixth grade. That has not, that argument has never, I've never been given a reason for that. So credits, courses, and curriculums are constantly changing, and no school does have the same exact requirements. Multiple school districts have different requirements for graduation credits, such as Pen Ridge, we require twenty-four, Council Rock requires twenty-three, some require a lot more. Radnor requires twenty-two point five credits, and Tridifern requires twenty-four credits. They are two of the top, and they only require three social studies, they are two of the top five performing school districts in rankings. So I do not, again, it, just because of going four to three does not mean that the rankings are going to go down necessarily. Also, I want to just point out that there is also no required Keystone test for social studies to impact the rankings as well. Keystone tests are only required for biology, algebra, and English after English ten. And that's something I even looked into. We off, like Pen Ridge offers different English courses for ninth and tenth grade. Different districts have different English courses for ninth and tenth grade, but they still have to take the Keystone. Again, there's just a lot of things that you can decide as a district on how you place certain things. And again, the students that came tonight and spoke so passionately about their classes, again, you are a person, have a voice, and I love that you're passionate about it. But again, it's not all students, it's just, they're not, all the students are not here, I'm sure there'd be some that would be appreciative of the choice. We have had people reach out to us on that front as well. So again, I'm not trying to belittle anything. Oh, the humanities course, that's not something that, for the humanities slash social studies course for ninth grade, that's not something that we suggest. And that's where, again, I wish that before the presentations, it would have been to have a better deliberation to see exactly what we were suggesting to be able to deliberate and debate and come together, but.
So I would like to comment now.
Could you please switch? I'm still in the minute, we're still.
Now, wait a minute, excuse me. You often, you often interrupt presentations to ask questions, Megan, let's not pretend that you don't. I want to add some, clarify something before we move on. I also noticed that Radnor, while it says it requires twenty-two credits, it then says that students are, students are required to take six and a half credits each year of high school. So I asked Dr. Robarchuk, who's not here this evening, to tell me. Radnor says they only require twenty-two and a half credits, but then when you look at their, further down the list, it says they require kids to take six point five credits every year of high school times four equals twenty-six credits. He explained to me that it's a sore subject, but that they are actually required to take twenty-six credits, and he said that the thinking behind putting it that way on their website was to sort of, I don't know, to kind of alleviate anxiety amongst students, but they're most certainly required to take twenty-six credits to graduate in Radnor. As far as the meeting goes, not one person, although it was offered, not one person asked for a different date, not one person offered a different date, not one person at any time throughout all of these months where we've said, let's stop, let's form a committee, let's have a conversation. Not one person backed off of this position of needing to pass this policy this way right now. You were given many opportunities privately, by many people, we asked you to please let us do this in a different way. You rebuffed every single opportunity that was presented to you. So please don't play the victim and pretend that you weren't given opportunities.
I agree, you were given plenty of opportunities over the last few months. Mrs. Blomgren, are you finished?
To do the committee, you guys rejected every time we asked.
And then Mrs. Chaykin had something to add as well.
Okay. I generally don't plan what I'm going to say, and tonight's no exception. So I'm going to hit a couple points and then go over this particular slide. I've probably spent more time on this than anything since I've been on school board. It's the first subject I've really had to do so much research on because everything else that we voted on, to me, was not, I knew exactly where I landed, so. And I can say for the four people that I know who are in favor of lowering, we've all done a lot and lot of work. I hate the way this is going down because I don't think it should have been done in this format. I personally found out through the public about the meeting last Monday. I would have liked to prepare something, prepare what we're doing now, deliberate, give the community, you know, a week to digest it. But that's not quite how it happened, and that's neither here nor there. Secondly, for some of us, I think this became important because it's tech school, for others, it has absolutely nothing to do with tech school. For me, it has to do with when I found out that the state only required three. I am always, always, always going to be on the side of choice for students and their parents and guidance counselors and them figure out what's best for them. I think it's great if it benefits tech, but that was not my motivation at all. The idea that you can take early release or a study hall is not true, you have to replace that credit. It's just that it could be with math, science, or business, you can't just take study hall or go home.
We'll explain with this chart. We still have, we still have point four grad.
I believe the teacher's there on that one, so.
Let's, let's, let's just, let's just, hold on. Hold on, let's just let her finish her comment and then.
I thought maybe we were changing the format of the way we did meetings, no?
No, just, please finish your comment.
You still have to take twenty-four grad requirements, or credits. Instead of four social studies, you can have to take three, but you have to replace it with another credit. A study hall isn't a credit. We're going to show a chart that offers fourteen pathways without any changes to current curriculum. Yeah, I'll go through in a second. Anybody who wants to take four credits still can. We're not suggesting take that away, we're not taking away world history. In fact, this suggests an option where we have a one-credit world history and a half-credit world history. If you want to hit world history, but you also want to take the required civics or an elective. It does not require ninth graders to take tenth or eleventh grade classes. There's a couple other things that kind of have become irrelevant as the meeting went on, but I'm just going to kind of go through this chart. And what we've done is mapped out for four credits, if you choose to take four credits academic, four different pathways. Keep in mind, adding civics, you can, anybody can test out a civics if that's going to mess up your schedule. Hillstill offers a free course that's great, and you can take that course, test out of our civics, there's your half a credit. All we want is for you to leave here with that information. We also have seven and a half electives left. So if you want to take four credits, you can use that civics class if you don't want to test out as one of your seven and a half. The truth is, when we added personal finance, we could have called it math, we could have called it social studies. It's just you have to use half of one of your electives for finance or test out of that. So we have four pathways for academic, we have four pathways for honors if you want four credits. starting with humanities honors, AP USC history, AP world, and then three different options for that fourth credit. And again, none of them involve taking a course away, none of them involve changing a single course we have. Then we have the same thing for, actually with three credits, we have four pathways for each rather than three. And I do really wish that this had been included either last week or put on the agenda so everybody had time to digest it, but the fact of the matter is nobody up here. I'm a big proponent of choice. If it involved changing every single history class in Penridge School District, I would say absolutely not. It's just not worth that extra flexibility. But the fact of the matter is, it doesn't, and there's nobody up here. And to, back to the last Monday's meeting, because several people said thank you to the people who came. There's nobody up here who would just intentionally, there's nobody up here who doesn't care about this subject. In fact, it's probably become one of the things we have spent the most time on. So that's just not true. I want the teachers to know that, and students, community members. None of us just said we don't really care how it pans out, and we're just going to, you know, fur this vote out, hopefully it works out. We've done a lot of research, and it's unfortunate that this is the manner in which it was finally, you know, both sides explained, but that's really all I have now.
Can you go back one slide? Yes, this one, thank you. Just a couple of other quick things. One, so the state requires four English courses and three math, science, and social studies so that students can choose which of those things to take more of based on their career path. This isn't just for tech kids. Anyone who's going into the science field or the math field needs to be able to take more AP courses or higher-level courses in those content areas, and you can only fit so many AP courses. There were some comments about, you know, listening to our professionals, and, you know, I guess I just want to point out, our professionals for, you know, our science professionals didn't want to change the double labs, but the administration did. Our health and phys ed professionals didn't want to switch from two credits to one and a half, but our administration did. PDE is saying three credits. PDE is saying arts and humanities. I mean, when you, it's like we're, it's like we're kind of saying, these are the specific professionals that you should listen to, and these, you know, in only certain circumstances. I appreciate all of our social studies teachers and the fact that they are passionate about this topic, and I appreciate that the kids are too, just as our science teachers are passionate. And they would all be advocating for more requirements in all of their individual content areas because that's their content area, and again, I greatly appreciate that. I appreciate the students' experiences and how this specifically benefited them, and I just want all kids to be able to choose and have those experiences and have the same stories that, you know, that our kids here are having.
Ms. Fannas Clemmons?
Yes.
Would it be possible to get a motion on the floor?
Yeah, in just a second, I'm just about done. Guidance counselors should really be at the forefront of helping kids decide which classes are best for their individual pathways. And the last comment I wanted to make, there was someone who had come out and shared how many humanities choices they have for their humanities credit. The reality is, they don't have any because they're not allowed to take a humanities course for that humanities credit. They can take it as an elective, but that was guided, the four social studies was taken in place of humanities. It's something that's been a tradition, or traditionally done even under the other requirements. I would like to, at this point, make a motion to amend the, I'm sorry, a motion to embed the chart that's above here into the policy that's on Slide Five above here of the PowerPoint sent as part of the policy and passed Policy Two Seventeen, waiving any additional reads.
So it's moved by Mr. Rice and seconded, or moved by Mrs. Fannas Clemmons and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions? And before we make, take comments or questions, I'm going to take the privilege of making the first comment. I want to reiterate again that we asked specifically, we said, we have heard from so many community members, and in my count, there are fewer than five that wrote to us to say that they support this change. In contrast, you've heard all of the community members, the teachers, the administration, and many, many, many emails that we received asking us not to do this. When the special curriculum committee meeting was scheduled, and I gave notice at the policy meeting, while we were walking out of the policy meeting, I said, we're going to have to let the teachers and administrators present. And I asked Dr. Bolton, if you can get a presentation together, if you think that can happen, let's have a curriculum meeting on Monday, the seventeenth. Dr. Bolton got everything together, but his staff's too efficient. He walked out the door, he walked out the door, he walked out the door of his office. The meeting got posted to the website, but there was no nefarious intent. Everybody knew that we should give people the opportunity to speak. And once again, after the board members were informed of the special curriculum meeting, they were told, we don't have to have this meeting in this way if you will agree not to rush this policy vote. They rebuffed that. They refused to wait. They gave us every indication that they were just going to go ahead and ramrod this through. And all of this talk that I've heard, it's really nice that people have done research, but I've heard a lot of, we've done this research, I looked at this, we are going to. What you don't realize is you are imposing your will on all of these people who are only making one reasonable request of you. All they want is for you to sit with them. Don't talk to them and tell them what you've devised. Let this be looked at in a forum where it can actually be analyzed, where we can actually follow up on those points that were made about how we're not apparently following the law. Because I've been on the board for seven years, and this is the first I'm hearing that, I don't know, possibly all of our graduates have graduated while violating the law. You have not given anyone the opportunity to hear your presentation and ask you questions. The board meeting is not where this happens. Committee meetings is where it happens, and you cannot pretend that you weren't told that we would gladly, I would have gladly changed that curriculum meeting, canceled it altogether, to instead schedule something at a later time where we could have more constructive conversation. So I want that on the record. You were given the opportunity over and over again. I know myself and other board members have asked you repeatedly. I know that community members have asked you repeatedly to please do this in the proper way. So you're not victims here. You were given every opportunity. What you're trying to do is impose this on people and say, this is our work. School board members do not write curriculum. You're trying to put a curriculum, a week, you're trying to put curriculum into a policy. You want this embedded into a policy, and that is not our role as school board members. I hear a lot of, we want this, this is our plan, we've done this work, but I never heard the word collaboration amongst all the people that we are to collaborate with. And yes, we should have a healthy respect for professionals. And to the point about the science labs, we went and we talked to the teachers. It was worked out that we could have chemistry labs for those students who wanted them. What the administration did was go and they went and they talked to students to find out, do you want chemistry labs? As it turned out, I think it was half and half, half? It was a little less than half and half. Who, kids were like, yeah, I want the chemistry lab. And other kids were like, no, I don't. So we had, not we, I didn't do the work. The administration had people hand-schedule kids to make sure those kids that want the lab got the lab. And the kids that didn't want the lab, well, they don't have to take the lab.
That's good compromise.
But the point is that we actually did collaborate with the professionals. There has been no collaboration on this. I want everybody to have that clear, so that if it passes, there has been no collaboration between the school board and the professionals. There has been school board members speaking to the professionals and telling them what to do. And I've heard the comment made many times, you know, if they're professionals, they'll be able to make it happen. It's not really a question if someone wants to, you know, can make it happen. You can demand that a doctor chop off somebody's foot, but if the foot is healthy, the question is going to be, should I chop off this foot? I shouldn't be doing that. That's what this is. This is people forcing their will on other people without getting any collaboration or input from them. It's not fair. It's not fair to the teachers. Most importantly, it's not fair to our students. I have no skin in the game with my family. My children will be done with Penridge next year. They will not be affected by this, but thousands of the students will be. And it is your responsibility as duly-elected school board members to sit and collaborate with the professionals, not impose your will and your plan as the only plan and the only option.
The board sets policy, and that's exactly what we did. We set policy with graduation requirements. It's mine, it's my, and we broke the...
If everyone please be in order.
You're saying we're forcing our will by giving people a choice. We didn't write any curriculum whatsoever, and we're trying to pass a policy that is actually...
It is, it is, you are imposing a curric, a course of study. That's, this is a course of study. That you are demanding without any collaboration...
We already have, we're making one class optional.
You are, Megan, when you change the course of study of a school includes all of the courses that you require your students to take, to say that you are not imposing a change to the course of study is a false statement. This is the basis of what you want to do, is change the course of study, and you have not collaborated with the proper people. Dr. Bolton, looks like you want to say something.
Just two things. One, the chart that's on the board, the presentation that just went through, I received at six thirty tonight. So I do not know whether board members have a chance to interact with this or not in terms of all board members, and if some have in terms of presentation. But in terms of being able to interact or provide input, there hasn't been any because it's obviously a lot of information. Two things, Mr. Miller. Number one, under social studies in the chart that's on the board, or the one that's being recommended, I'm just making sure we're all looking at the same thing.
Yeah.
I believe under social studies, the board does have the right to set policy, which means they could determine how many credits. I believe the district and the administration determines curriculum, which means to dictate what those credits are is really the administrative position and not the board's position, to say that it must be early American history, modern American history, civics and choice.
I think the, the board can determine the number of credits the administration has to meet the appropriate state standards.
Correct. So within the three standards, it would be the administration's choice at how to meet the state standards within those three credits.
I assume the administration would write curriculum that would get you to meet the state standard within three credits.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't anticipate, I could be wrong, the makers of the motion could answer, that they anticipate that those particular credits are the only, the last word on which credits.
I heard that one of our existing courses would become optional. And so I just, that's not what I heard from some of the members that were up here. I also need an opinion as to whether this is a significant enough change that it would have to go back to first read.
If the majority of the board waives the read, no, that's, that's the school's policy.
I just want to make a, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
For me, it's, it's, it's not so much the ends as it is the means. And it feels like the means is not the best practice for our board and how this is accomplished. I think it would have been helpful for us to get the information that's just been presented tonight so that we could work through it, but I do think it needs to be collaborative with the stakeholders that are involved. Again, you know, we might look at this and determine that, you know, we need more than twenty-four credits, or we need less than twenty-four credits, or what's encompassed in that. But it feels, it feels awkward the way that we're going through this, and I'm not sure at this point who's asked for this. And when I'm asked, why are we doing this? I can only reply that a majority of the directors see it from their personal perspective that this, this is something that needs to be moved on. There doesn't seem to be any consensus on the why. When I ask people why, there's no consensus. Everybody has a different reason. There's not one single reason for that. And I think if we're going to make a change, the people who want the change have the burden to prove that whatever we're doing now is not appropriate. I think that's a heavier burden. I think you need to make the case. I think that we should continue with what we're doing unless there's good reason to make a change. I don't think a case has been made at this point. I appreciate the presentation, but it's raised more questions in my mind than it's presented answers. Even in Megan's, you had like fifteen questions in what you were presenting that's posed rhetorical questions perhaps, but I don't have the answer for that. And I do think as to the issue of, of people dropping out, it's not people, you have still the required credits, you still have to take twenty-four, but as has been indicated, people take more than twenty-four credits. So as I did when I was a senior, if I had all my twenty-four credits in, I've already been accepted to college, my class, if it was required, I'd have to take it. If I took it as an optional, I just dropped it and had early release. So that's where that comes in, that you're still required for your twenty-four, but if you, if you have more than twenty-four credits, you'll drop the one that may be requiring more rigorous study and just move on. So I, I think that's hard too. I mean, that, you could say that's student choice to drop it, but I'm not sure whether that's a student choice that we want to advocate or advance or champion. So I, I think that there, this needs to, we may end up at the same place after the process goes through, but I just think if, if we can't believe in the process, it's going to be very difficult for people to buy into the process.
So I agree with those comments, and I just want to make a final appeal to board members, again, to go through the process and do the due diligence. I, I hear the comments that we're not going to be able to graduate vets and doctors, and, but we are. We're, we're already doing that, and nothing's broken. So maybe we should do something different, but let's go through that in a measured, in a measured manner. The other thing is, I hear everybody saying the same thing, or the five of you saying the same thing about not knowing about the meeting. Those of us that were there, I mean, I didn't get a special notification. I looked at my email. So, I mean, I hear you, but the rest of us were able to get there.
So originally, I was going through a presentation, but because of all the excellent presentations that I saw, I, from the students, and from the faculty, and from the administration, I'm going to skip that because it's just repeating almost everything everybody said. So I appreciate all your input. What I wanted to talk about was, we should be debating these things, okay? And debate, give your reasons of why you should do something, and then the other side rebuts that and tells you why this isn't right, and comes with real data. And we're not seeing that. We're seeing, we all did a lot of research, but I don't know what that research is, and I don't know where your sources came from, but I know that the people who spoke eloquently tonight did their research, and they've lived it for twenty years, and even more, sorry about that. We've been there a long time. But that's the kind of information as a board member we need to embrace. And we may not agree with it, and we may go a different path, but we don't pull it up at the last minute. So this wasn't on the agenda tonight that we were going to pass this.
I know, because we asked, and it was...
You know, Megan, you've said quite enough for a long time. Let me have my few minutes, not your ten minutes.
Please, everyone be in order, please. And Ms. Fannas Clemmons, please let Mr. Wirth finish.
So, I've continued, and I won't continue as long as other people have talked. But my point is, this came out of nowhere, right? Now, this is a huge change for this, for this school, to go from four to three. And I had all these reasons up on the screen that I'm not going to show as to why social studies is important, but you already said those, so it's, don't want to take this for too long. So my point there is, we're going to now skip all the readings and try to ram it through in one meeting. Does that make sense to all the board members? That's the real main question here. We had people who want more gym credits. We have people who want a business class in here in the requirements. Nobody's getting what they want. They're getting less, they're getting less PD credits. That's one of the passions of one of the board members, was we should have more, okay? That's going to go down if we vote yes tonight, and we'll have less, okay? So there, there's so many things going on here. How can we possibly, in good conscience, pass this tonight without discussing it with the people who are truly the experts, not the ones who've done research on the internet or whatever, to say that they know more than these people do? I mean, that bothers, that just blows me away. It bothers my mind.
I might...
And I would just say that if you vote tonight for this, to pass it and jam it down everyone's throats, that would be the worst thing this board has ever done. And we haven't always done all the right things, in my opinion, but that's okay. And so I'd say we move on, vote no on this, and go back together to do it right, and come back in a few months and not have these debates on these big stages where nobody really can get their point across. And that's it. I'm done, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wirth.
I appreciate it, and I hope everybody comes together on this.
at this meeting without warning, just because something isn't on the agenda, I received no emails, Dr. Bolton, did you receive any emails notifying us that this information wanted to be shared? Ordinarily, board members will talk all the time in between meetings. I would like to maybe present this. Here's something that I would, you know, like to talk about. Not one person before this evening, before the very moment it was put up on the screen, the only people that saw this were you five. We have a duty to talk about these things in the sunshine. We have a duty to present them in a manner where they can be considered. And just like Ron just said, if you have your idea, that's great. Everybody can have their ideas, but you can't just come in here and say, this is our idea, this is what we're going to do. Here, you've heard us say it, but we're not going to be able to take any feedback from you before we vote on it. That is not appropriate. And if your ideas are as good as you say they are, they will rise to the top. In a conversation, that idea will rise to the top. When someone wants to force something on me, and my apologies to car salesmen out there, but if someone tells me, you know, you've got to buy this today, whatever it is, you've got to buy it today because I'm not going to have this deal for you tomorrow, that makes me really nervous. That makes me wonder, what's this person hiding? So to throw this out here, not offer any opportunity for collaboration on it, not even consider, there are six unique possibilities that we could explore. You are refusing to listen to anyone else and explore any of those six opportunities other than your own. You keep saying, we've been talking about this for a year. We have not been talking. You have been talking. You have been saying what you want, and you just want it passed. We have not been talking together. That's my point. So let's please dispense with this idea that this has been discussed for a year. It has not. It has been decreed for a year, and that is not how we are supposed to operate.
There have been multiple presentations that I feel like we have heard, as well as when this suggestion first came up at a, either a committee or a board meeting about the social studies credits. And I voted in favor of it when it first came up. After that meeting, I remember talking to Dr. Bolton, and he was saying how the social studies teachers are really upset when they, when they heard about it. And I was, because with everything with health and P E, we voted on that one time for a first read, and I think it was nine-two, to vote to lower the credits. But I did reach out to the health and P E teachers, and I met with them, as well as with the science, the double labs, I met with them. And I, after that night, I was like, oh my gosh, you're right. I do not want, I did not reach out to me with the social studies teachers. So I couldn't find the department head. I did not know who the department head was on the website. So I emailed to social studies teachers at the high school, and that was in August, August 27. And I was told that they did forward it to the department head, and that would like to meet. I was then asked to wait until they would present into that board meeting because it was kind of like a short, it was a committee meeting, because then it was a board meeting. And I was wanting to meet with them before the board meeting, so I was asked to wait. But it's, again, then it didn't pan out. It still felt like from the part of not, I wanted to have that informal, that dialogue. Yes, we can have it in public as well, but I'm definitely fine to come, sit down, and meet, and do all those things. But then that never came to fruition. And it's not like I did not reach out to try to do that, just as I had with health and P E, as well as science. So to say that it's just saying, I'm not listening to what you said, then now this is the third presentation tonight, coming to the board meetings. I think there has been a lot of information that we've received, and it's not that we've said, no, we don't want to hear it, or no, you can't say it. So that's from.
So, yes, you, we've heard presentations, but each one in isolation. There's never been a time where people have sat in a room and actually talked about the different options. That's what you're not understanding. There needs to be a committee, like the comprehensive planning committee, like the scheduling committee, the block scheduling committee, all those things that we've done. You sit in a room together, and you talk about and present your ideas to one another at the same time, and go over them together. And having a board member sit with a group of teachers doesn't make up for that need for the collaboration with all stakeholders. That due diligence has not been done, not by a long shot. We've talked here, we've talked here, we have a whole brand-new presentation here, and we're supposed to vote on it. That is not collaboration. That's not due diligence.
There was no due diligence or collaboration for health and P E either. Those teachers were not given that.
Can I just ask everyone to be in order?
Yeah, part of the present, part of what you guys want to do is imposing health and P E. And I think in my president's report, I did point out that health and P E changes are getting lost in this whole scenario.
You voted no for health and P E first read.
I'd like to call the question.
We have the ability to do collaboration, and we have not done that.
Madam President, the question has been called. We can proceed to a vote. And given the gravity of this matter, may I suggest, Madam President, that you do a vote call vote?
I'm sorry, I still need to understand something about the chart. First of all, I want to make it, I want to again say that I do not believe that it is the board's purview to dictate specific courses, right, outside of personal finance, which is, you know, covered in different things, and it was a decision that was made. So I think it should, if, right, three social studies courses. I also think the chart adds up to 24 and a half credits, and I'm a little worried about losing my math card, but I think if I add up all the credits, it says 24 and a half, and not 24, and the chart on the bottom says 24. And so I want to make sure we're, again, I sold us at 6:30.
So I've never seen this before, and you asking me to vote on this tonight, and you can't even get the credits right? I mean, come on. This is ridiculous.
Can we be in order, please? Thank you. I appreciate everyone keeping it spicy this evening. The motion has, the question has been called, the question has been called. That's a proper motion. That's in order. Now, Ms. Vanas Clemmons, before we proceed to a vote, do you have anything clarification-wise you want to say to Dr. Bolton?
I need some clarification, too, on the three credits, because we're wanting to have that .5 required civics.
It's in there.
It's in there.
But if we can't, if we don't, to Dr. Bolton's point, if the, if it's just three credits, and...
It's three credits that has to meet the state standards.
All right. Does everybody understand that you are still, you listen to yourselves? You're still asking all of these questions that have not been clarified, and you are about to vote to make it the law of the land in Pen Ridge.
Oh, and then we're going to go up to 25 or 24 and a half credits, too?
No matter how you slice it, no matter if you suspend policy to fast-track this through on a, I've never before in my life seen something proposed and voted on at a board business meeting.
Madam President.
Well, the math is definitely not right, so. I mean, can we get the math? The teachers up here again to make sure, check our arithmetic, because we can't seem to get that many.
It's being suggested that the personal finance .5 is now being required to fall under either math?
No, it can either count as an elective, or under social studies, or under math. That's why it's there. It's saying that that needs to be in one of those categories.
Okay, I'm just going to repeat, presenting information like this, and even amongst the five of you.
Which is why you should let it go on the agenda instead of vetoing it, because you don't have anything.
It's not a veto.
Can we please go to a vote?
No, I don't think that we should actually vote on something that is still being presented and discussed, and the people that are trying to vote for it are still asking questions, even as they are attempting to make something the law of the land in Pen Ridge. First of all, you have to, you have to suspend our policy. You would have to suspend our policy. In order to vote on this tonight, you would first have to vote to suspend our policy, throw it out the window, continue to have no proper discussion of this. First, you have to suspend the policy, because this is a substantial change to a policy, and it should be going back to first read. So that's the first thing that you would have to do. And then you would have to, after you vote to suspend the policy, if that's successful, then you could vote on this. But I still say, you're asking questions about it. You don't even have it clear in your own minds what this is. You didn't present it to anyone. You didn't serve notice, and you've had at least a week, more than a week, to have, to have said, hey, we're not putting this on the agenda, but we want to let you know, we would like to present this information. You didn't do that. You chose to do a sneak attack, an ambush, and now you want to force this on the committee.
So, just, I want to, just as a matter of parliamentary procedure, I thought that the original motion was to suspend any additional readings and pass policy 217 as presented here. That was my understanding. And so to vote, if you vote in favor of this motion, you are suspending the readings, as you're permitted under board policy to do, and go ahead and pass 217. Whether, whether board members choose to do so, we've had a lot of vigorous debate about that. But that's, that's what's on the table, as I understood the motion that was made.
Can I also clarify one more thing that I believe is different? I think there's two more things that are different that have never been seen before tonight. One of them at the top, I think it now says for the class of 2024, with the caveat at the bottom about 2026 being the .5 civics. So what I think that is saying is, beginning with next year's seniors, that's the class of 2024, they would not be required to take four years of social studies, right? I believe this is, because the original presentation always was, let's do this for ninth grade, because then we have time to do it over, as kids were moving up, and because everybody has a pretty common ninth grade schedule. They all have pretty much the same credits. It's after that where they diverge. I believe this now says 2024 at the top, which means the recommendation is that for the current juniors, they could be sitting in their last social studies course. It says at the bottom they can take it, right? I don't think, they don't have to have civics, obviously, because that course isn't even written yet. But I believe that's what that's saying. I think it's also saying that personal fitness can now be a social studies course, right? Which is also different from anything we've talked about in terms of where it falls, right?
Personal fitness can be a social studies course?
Personal finance. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Not personal fitness. Right? But personal finance now says social studies. So I just want to make sure that, I do believe those are two other changes, and in case I'm missing something, just want to make sure that we're talking about the differences before we go.
So when the policy, or when the motion was made to fast-track this and go, you know, go, forego all the additional readings, it wasn't divulged that you had all new information to add to this policy, and information that is very significant.
It was divulged. Jordan covered that information. I heard her say it.
No, no, no. I'm talking about the very first thing you did this evening, where you voted to put this policy not only on the agenda, but to surpass all of the readings that we would normally go through. And when you did that, you did not divulge that you had all new information. So I'm going to go back to my point again, that if this is such a great idea, if you believe in your hearts, and, and, listen, I'll believe you, and like Jonathan said, if we have a conversation, and we all go, oh, I get it. Okay, let's do that. That's the best choice. If we had that conversation, and this idea rose to the top, then it would be set. The fact that you don't want anybody to actually scrutinize your decision is making me feel like there's something that we're not being told. There's information that we're not being given.
Can I add something to you, Jim? I just, so this is brand-new to me. I didn't see it before. What concerns me is the sunshine act, and then, did everybody get together outside of here and come up with the five people? I don't know what happened. I don't, I have no proof or anything, but it's a concern to me that if you're going to flip something in in the last minute, and five people already know about it, and four don't, that just doesn't add up to honesty.
We've literally been saying this for eight months.
No, we have not. We have not been saying this. There's new things up here.
Can I ask a question to Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Aren't you glad that it's me asking a question?
I'm glad that anyone's asking a question.
If we were, there's clearly a lot of confusion. I think this is, the whole thing's ridiculous, to be honest. If we were to table it tonight, could we have an emergency curriculum meeting? Just let me finish, please.
Yeah.
Present this, discuss it. We don't have a school board meeting in November. December's reorganization, so we're talking about January. Could we also have a school board meeting in November, if we allow ourselves some time to talk about this? If we can really talk in a normal forum, the last time we were at a meeting, it was like a screaming match in the curriculum meeting, and quite honestly, I couldn't hear what anybody was saying. But is that possible, or do we have to now vote one way or another? I don't think it's going to change the end outcome, but...
It's a policy, not curriculum.
Policy meeting.
And we can't even...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'd just like the answer of one question tonight. That would be great.
We can do that. Yes, it works. If, we can do that.
Can you just let me answer the question resume? I didn't get started, but thank you. The answer to the question is that there is a motion and a second on the table. Anyone can make a motion to table that would take five people to vote it, to table the motion. But the vote has been called. So in addition, three people can call a member, can call a meeting of the school board, and the president has to adhere to that under the school code. So...
She didn't adhere to this one.
Can I just finish the answer to the question? There is a motion and a second on the table until, and there has been, the question has been called, and I, either proceed to a vote or table it. Those are the two things.
Can we, can we make another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
A motion to table needs no second. Five votes to table, though.
Wait, wait, wait. I just wanted to make this motion because, and then we...
Mr. Works, the motion to table takes seniority. That's what I was just adding.
So, Mr. Miller, just to clarify, if we were to table it, we could then have another meeting specifically about this, and if three board members agree to a school board meeting in November, we could do that?
With proper notice, you could do that.
Isn't that the same as five board members putting something onto an agenda, and the board member, and the board president saying, no, sorry, I'm not doing it anyway? The only remedy for that is taking them to court, which I don't think we plan on doing, when she refuses to.
Megan?
There's a motion to table, there's a motion to table on the floor. There is no debate on the motion to table. Five votes tables the motion. There's no condition on that motion to table. So it needs to get voted on now.
Well, I'm saying, can, if we were, can we do that? I'm not putting out a motion to...
A motion to table has been made. If you vote, if you vote yes for it, it's tabled. If you vote no for it, you proceed to a vote on the original motion.
We will meet.
Well, there's, you only meet if, again, three members ask for the meeting, and it's properly notified.
What is, what is proper notification?
It means it has to be published in the newspaper, record, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
24 hours, or 72 hours beforehand?
I think it's 72 hours for a special meeting. But I'm now verging into areas of the school code that I hadn't studied that long before this, this meeting, and I didn't carry it with me. There is a motion to table on the table. That motion is in order. Five votes to say yes, tables this motion. With regard to a meeting afterwards, that meeting is at the direction of three members of the board, and we'll have to follow the school code, and we will retake up this matter if we do that. It could be a one-agenda meeting.
Mrs. Vanas Clemmons?
No.
Ms. Petiskey?
Yes, to table.
Mrs. Blomgren?
No.
Mrs. Chiken?
Yes.
Mr. Cormack?
Say it again, Bob, sorry.
Say it again, Bob.
Say no.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
No.
And Mr. Works?
Yes.
Matter is tabled. We'll go on to section P and U. Matter is tabled. We'll go on to section P and D.
Can I make a motion to approve the first reading on the following policies A through C? Threat assessments, emergency preparedness in response, and school security personnel.
Fires a second, I'll second it. So it's moved by Mrs. Vance-Clemens and seconded by myself. Are there any comments or questions from board members? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Vance-Clemens.
Okay, the next policy committee meeting is scheduled for November 7th. Okay, the IU met on October 18th. And just a few highlights, celebrating White Cane Day. White Cane Safety Day is an international holiday celebrated on October 15th in the United States each year since 1964. The date is set aside to honor the achievements of people who are blind or visually impaired, and the important symbol of blindness and tool of independence, the white cane. History of orientation and mobility was another, was a presentation that was discussed. The profession of orientation and mobility developed after World War II, when soldiers who had been blinded in battle were returning home. The soldiers were highly motivated to be successful, and in response, a technique was used for using a cane that is lightweight and longer than support canes. This technique and cane revolutionized independent travel for people with visual impairment. Some instructional practices, the Bucs IU Orientation and Mobility Specialists focused on teaching purposeful, safe, efficient, and effective travel skills to individuals who are blind and visually impaired. Orientation refers to the ability to know where you are and where you want to go. Mobility refers to the ability to move safely, efficiently, and effectively from one place to another. Communication comes in many forms. Our special education staff work with each student to help identify the best ways for them to be able to communicate. Shown here is a student using pictures, I can't really show you the picture, though, to select his response of writing prompt as he works to complete a journal entry for the day. Students answer questions, make choices, identify pictures, and endeavor to expand their vocabulary as they do their journaling as part of their writing lesson. Another reminder about the wow treats. There are seasonal wow treats that you can continue to order. As far as, there was one other legislative, there's one legislative item that I thought I would highlight in the Senate Bill 1243. It was introduced by Senator Chris Gebhardt, and would establish a high school graduation requirement for students to complete an individual economics and personal finance course in addition to all other graduation requirements. This new financial literacy graduation requirement would be required for all students beginning with the 23, 24 school year, and would allow the financial literacy class curriculum to satisfy the student's social needs, family and consumer science, or math, or business education requirement for graduation. The bill would allow the school district to determine the graduation requirement to which the credit earned by the, by the student is applied. The measure was referred to the Senate Education Committee and was voted favorably from the committee by a vote of 7-4 on June 21st, 2022. It was then referred to the full Senate for consideration, but taken off the Senate floor calendar, and referred to the Senate Appropriations Committee. It is scheduled for consideration by the Senate Appropriations Committee on October 18th, 2022. There, there may be action on it as early as, as this week, I believe. The next IU board meeting is scheduled for November 15th.
Upper Bucks Tech, Mr. Cormack?
Thank you very much. On October 28th, we had the most talented technical school board directors meeting. You should be known that on November 3rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., the tech school will have an open house. Come see our cutting-edge programs and highly qualified instructors, and understand how you might become a leader in innovative workforce development. So it's an open house, November 3rd. Be an interesting meeting with the Occupational Committee. We had over 150 members, businesses in the community, attend a committee meeting. Very impressive. Megatronics Labs, it's a company called FarmBots, formed by our students, by St. Coban's Competition. The FarmBot program received bronze finalist medal, and FarmBot is nothing more than a hydrocarbon plant system, and it's really unique, and it's, it shows some great promise of future development. Our food truck is open again, so if you've got to be interested in having a food truck come by your office, please give the main office of the tech school a call. And 13 companies participated in placement management, that's for 14 students. That is my report. Our next meeting is November 17th, 2022.
Thank you. And PCEF, Dr. Bolton, did you want to add anything?
Just to say that PCEF spends time celebrating the learning grants and doing additional planning for a lovely evening, which will happen in April.
That brings us to old business. See any, any new business? Seeing none. We're back to public comment. So I'll get back to page one. It was Darren Austin. Signed up twice, but she's still a minute. State your name and municipality, please.
Darren Austin, Burgessie Borough. "Smut and Filth." At the last meeting, these were the words that a Pen Ridge School Board Director used to describe a book that was in our high school library, allegedly by Tiffany D. Jackson. Then our colleague on the board read some excerpts from the book to demonstrate its smuttiness and filthiness. It was a book they used as a smoking gun to justify the need to protect our kids from pornography in our libraries. It's time for a reality check. This is a book, a young adult novel. It is not smut, it is not filth, and it sure as hell not pornography. I know this because I actually read it. Is there explicit language in the book? Yes, big deal. There was explicit language in the high school library when we were teens. There's profanity in the classics, literary masterpieces. There's also everything else in life that makes people uncomfortable. Sex, rape, murder, drugs, war, violence, racism. It's time for some much-needed context, context that was conveniently left out. This book takes place in a group home for juvenile offenders convicted of very serious offenses. Their main character, Mary, just finished seven years in jail for allegedly killing a baby when she was nine years old. Mary is now pregnant. The social workers want her to have an abortion. Mary insists that she wants to keep the baby and raise the child herself. To do that, Mary knows that she has to convince people of her innocence and prove that she is a capable parent. So she starts sneaking out of the group home to take SAP prep courses. She saves money for a graphing calculator. She wants to get a good score on the SATs and hopefully get into college. She covertly reaches out to legal advocates to help appeal her murder conviction. But to say the odds are stacked against Mary is an understatement. For one, the group home is extremely unsafe environment. Mary endures physical and verbal abuse. Okay, stop right there. Verbal abuse, that is the context of the excerpts read at the school board meeting. The dialogue needs to be harsh, profane, and upsetting, to capture how dangerous, unhealthy, and difficult the situation Mary is in. It's not gratuitous pornography meant to corrupt the minds of vulnerable high school students. It's realistic dialogue that is essential to the story. I don't want to give any spoilers, but I'll say this. This book is dark, gritty, twisted, disturbing, and it feels dangerous. It's a book that churns in your head for days after finishing it. It's a type of fiction that some teenagers enjoy reading, and that's okay. It's not right for every single high school student. Of course it isn't, but what book really is? We don't need you stepping in and protecting our, other people, other people's kids from library books. I have way more to say on this issue, but I'll leave you with this quote from Oscar Wilde. "The books that the world calls immoral are the books that, that show the world its own shame." Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Adam, I think you were next.
Adam Benchick, East Rock Hill. I am going to make my comment quick. There was a lot of great comment, a lot of organized ideas shared in the public, on the first public comment, and our teachers did a great job. Dr. Schei did a great job. And the students are awesome, and they did wonderful. And it's so funny to see how they did compared with how the school board acted tonight. It's, I am not surprised, I'm not surprised, unfortunately, but I think you could probably learn a lot from watching how they act, the way they make their comments. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. And then Janelle and Cole Montigny, you can each speak separately.
Janelle Montigny, Hilltown. I have three boys in the district that all love baseball. It wasn't until last year that I found out the Pen Ridge School District has never had middle school baseball. That was very surprising to me, since it's one of the most popular sports in our area. On top of that, all of the surrounding school districts have it, including Central Bucks, Sodderton, and Quaker Town. Having a sport in middle school helps make the high school program stronger. Also, there are many kids that stopped playing baseball at 12 and 13 because there are less options available. Adding baseball in middle school will keep more boys playing, and it's widely known that sports help develop character and keep kids out of trouble. Another important fact is, our middle school sports are not fair and balanced. There are nine total for girls, including softball, but only eight for boys. It is really difficult to explain to my sons why the girls have softball, but the boys won't have baseball. I found out recently that a number of parents have tried to push for middle, middle school baseball in years past. It hasn't happened yet, but it's gotten closer. Last year, a feasibility study was done, and recently, it was expressed that middle school athletic directors were asked to explore the possibility of adding middle school baseball for 2023, 2024, and make a report and recommendations in early 2023. Last year's study showed that there are three 90-foot fields in the district that have never been used by high school teams, so we have available fields. Those are Colp, Hilltown, and Deep Run. The costs would be similar to other middle school sports, particularly softball. Finally, the interest in getting this program is significant. I know a lot of people already wrote the board. I have not met a single family between all my boys' teams that doesn't want this option for their boys when they get older. This is very personal to me, with my oldest going to seventh grade next year. He and many of his friends are really hoping that the administration gets a plan on the table to vote on by January, so they could play. Thank you in advance for the work and making the report. I am hopeful and excited to see this happening for our boys. Thank you.
Cole?
Cole Montigny, Hilltown. First, I would like to thank my mom for all of her hard work in the past few months, trying to get middle school baseball for me and my friends. I started playing baseball over seven years ago, and it's one of my favorite sports. I have learned a lot and made many friends. It has taught me how important teamwork and hard work are. Also, to never give up and always do your best. Many of my friends at Central play baseball, and I think it would be so much fun to be on a team together. It would also be cool to play against South and North and get to see my friends in those leagues. We have softball in middle school, and I really don't think it is fair to not have baseball. I, I am asking you to please start a middle school baseball program for next year. It would mean a lot to me and my friends. Thank you.
All right, and we do have one announcement. We were going to have an executive session after tonight's meeting, but due to the late hour, we are going to reschedule that. And our next school board meeting will be held on Monday, December 5th. With that, taking motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, good. We're adjourned.
Mr. Thomas, please let us know in the live stream.